That was the business lunch this morning, Madam Mayor.
It was, it was good, Wes.
Okay, I was gonna say if it's only you and me, uh, oh, there's everybody else. It was gonna be a short meeting for it's only you and I.
So we got everybody here. I don't know where Sheena is or Natalie.
Natalie will be late.
Natalie's gonna be late because she's meeting with Minister Nixon, but Sheena's not here, so. Is she?
Yeah.
She won't be in. Okay, all right, well, let's start the meeting. I'll call it to order for Pi Day, Tuesday, March fourteenth, Committee of the Whole. Uh, we have everyone, we have Councilor Killa, Councilor Mackay, Councilor McKeskey, myself in person, and we have Councilor Hughes. Is she online? Still don't see her. And Councilor Bodhead. Sheena, are you there?
She's a participant.
There she is. You hear us, Sheena? Okay, awesome. Uh, and Councilor Jolly is not here, but she is meeting with Minister Nixon about the Homeland Housing Project, so she'll be joining us when she can. Any changes to the agenda from our city manager or anyone else? All right, I need a motion.
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
Beat them.
That's the mark for twenty twenty-three agenda be adopted as presented.
I'm not gonna vote for that.
Okay. All for the votes?
Or pass for.
I see Wes is in favor and okay, that passes. We have no registered appointments, right? Okay.
Somebody from.
And now I need someone to make a motion if there are no changes, errors, or admissions to the February fourteenth Committee of the Whole. See, okay, Councilor Masti's doing that motion. All those in favor? Passes? Trust you guys. You'll let me know if it doesn't, right? First item on our agenda of new business is leash area enhancement. And Danielle, is she here?
It'll be Craig next morning.
Craig, you're gonna do it? Okay. Nice to see you, Craig.
Morning, good morning. I don't have a formal presentation prepared for today, but I thought I could give you a few highlights and field any questions that you might have. So this AR is asking for two hundred thousand dollars for councils to consider taking two hundred thousand dollars from the off-leash dog, sorry, dog license reserve in support of two dog capital projects. Uh, the two projects, uh, have been on our radar for a little while. The first one is at Dodger Dog Park. Uh, it's one of two, uh, dog parks in the city. Uh, it's a stormwater reserve, uh, facility that has also the dual purpose of, uh, of the dog park. What we're asking for is funds to fence off that space. So we've heard some computers community feedback over the years that while it's a, it is a good dog park. Uh, one of its limitations is that it only has fencing on one side, which doesn't create a safe space, uh, secure space for dog. Play with the net facility, so we're looking to bring it up to the similar standard to the Combe Park Lake with the fence around there. Also to address some circulation issues at the park, uh, because of its stormwater management perspective. Uh, it has some pinch points in the park that are reversible, but not necessarily accessible to the communities. We're looking to improve that as well. There'll be some minor updates in terms of signage and seating in the park. The second, uh, project is related to dog signage. Uh, and this project again comes from, apart from community feedback, and it's looking at our off-leash areas spaces in particular. One of the things we've heard from community is that, uh, some of our off-leash areas, uh, could have improved signage to help communicate what is allowable or not allowable within off-leash. Uh, off-leash spaces as well as kind of what some dog owner responsibilities are in those places. Uh, we've done an audit of our off-leash signage in the city and found some inconsistency in cross signage. We're asking for some funding that we could use to start to bring a consistent and more clear message to our off-leash. Uh, sorry, off-leash area signage throughout the city.
That's it.
That's it.
Awesome. Um, when we fenced in Combe Lake. Here at the time, I was very concerned with the aesthetic appeal of, of an area, and I think we added extra money to the budget to. Put some shrubs except along the fence to make it look better. Is that. Contemplated in this project?
Uh, it's a concept phase right now. Uh, there is some consideration for the landscaping there again, having to protect that, uh, stormwater management is the, the primary function for that site. So, uh, there is also already some, uh, trees and shrubs around that area, so we can look at that and review in terms of detail design of the site.
Sure, it's okay. Yeah, I'm not so concerned. Go ahead, Councilor Mackay, then Councilor Killek.
Yeah, I, I see the uncommitted balance on the dog license reserve is at eight oh five six forty-one. How like, does that get replenished enough? Like, I mean, how often do we replenish it? We usually use dog licensing and, uh, and the like, just to actually keep it. So will this actually. Drive it down so low that we'll have a, a trouble getting back up to a appropriate level, or is, are we, are we safe either way?
Yeah, I, I think we're fairly safe either way. Our dog license, uh, is, is an annual, uh, licensing process finance, uh, estimates about eighty-six thousand dollars a year. Uh, in, in revenue from the dog license fee, so anticipating this could be built back up over a three-year period.
Correct. Good. I didn't know it was that much. Yeah, no, that's interesting.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, Craig, thanks. Um, just the signage and the example of Willoughby, and I know we. Had lots of concerns from residents on Willoughby specifically, uh, because of the schools and the playground, kitty playground. I think school playground and then pathways through, through there. So signage in Willoughby for sure. Um, totally makes sense. It, it's, what I wasn't clear of is, is it just signage at Willoughby or signage at other. Uh, dog parks as well? They kind of suffer the same issue, um, or is this money focus, um, and project just focused at Willoughby?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Uh, the priority, we did highlight Willoughby in the report there, given, uh, recent community interest in the site. Uh, our prioritization, well, we're looking at all, all off-leash dog areas throughout the city. Uh, we'd like to look at our, our trail system as well in terms of where we, we provide kind of dog-related signage. In terms of prioritization, uh, we're looking to, to focus on the sites like Willoughby that have a, a shared border with, uh, other green spaces. Yep. Uh, then depending on, on the finances available, how far we can stretch that, we'll expand out into the other off-leash areas beyond that. Okay.
Good, because I, I think there is. Problems at other areas that, that just didn't get the visibility that, uh. problems at other areas that just didn't get the visibility that Willoughby had, and so if we can, it sounds like we're going to address some of the other secondary hotspots, if you will, that would be great.
Question. Yeah, we're looking at a combination of permanent signage and some temporary signage, so we can work with enforcement to try and try and manage messaging across the city.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one comment. I've had feedback from part of the public that there could be a little bit more signage, pick it up, you know?
Yeah, no, that just ties it right perfectly well set up into my question. I know we have a dog cleanup at Lake Combe annually, and it's significant cost and significant waste usually, but what's it, will this anticipation, I know that obviously this is gonna maybe increase the number of used, dog users at that site now that we're fencing it in Dodger I'm talking about? Do we, do we know what the cost would be, or are they gonna substantially increase if we have a dog cleanup required at Lake Combe and then another dog cleanup required in Dodger as well because of that? Do we have any anticipation of that occurring or any?
I could say that we, we do do.
Do, 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 do?
Right in. Yeah. We complete the dog pickups twice a year at a number of sites around the city, so Dodger Dog Park is on that list already. Not sure that we can accurately calculate what the increase volume might be at Dodger Dog Park. Yeah, but if we think of the net dog use across the city, I think we're, we look to hope to see some shift in where those dogs are playing.
We clean up in Willoughby as well?
Yeah.
Councilor Hughes?
Thank you. Just to your comment, Councilor Mackay, we are paying the forty thousand for two pickups for all the dog parks and also three meter swath on either side of all the trails. So, and it's not based on weight, which is good, because we have a lot of weight. So we won't, the contract I think is an excellent contract because we don't, we're just paying for, for time or just, just, that's the product grade of them are doing at the service, but not based on what it is. So it's all the dog parks, it's all of the arenas, because those are also considered off-leash, and also the trails on either side is all covered in that contract. So, yeah.
You have another question, Mike?
Yeah, at, at Dodger, Craig, one, one of the big benefits of Lake Combe Park is that it's sectioned off big dogs and little dogs. And I think we got really good response from residents in having a safe place for the smaller dogs. So are you envisioning when we put up the fencing at Dodger that there'll be a smaller or a section for smaller dogs only? Like dash hounds and. I didn't.
Wilbur's got his own dog park. Yes, my apology on protocol through the chair to Councilor Killig. Excellent question. We had considered the value of a small dog park in Dodger Dog Park. Looking at, again, its primary use as a stormwater management facility, as well as just the layout of that space, creating a smaller fenced-off area within there didn't, didn't fit well in design. What you will notice though in Dodger Dog Park is again because of its stormwater management, so it does have areas in there, a larger area and a smaller area that are naturally divided by just the geography of the landscape, and we're hoping to, we can maximize some of those with some messaging to provide different place spaces for dogs within there.
Okay.
Okay.
No more questions? All right, go ahead, Ken.
I'm gonna make the recommended motion that the Standing Committee of the Whole recommends the council direct administration to complete dog designated area enhancement work as outlined in this report for up to two hundred thousand dollars funded from the dog license reserve.
All right.
No, scrub the last, do, do. No comments. I mean, thank you very much. I mean, you know, I've obviously lived closely by Dodger, and I've always thought what a great opportunity this would be, but I always saw it being underutilized because of obviously some of the deficiencies identified in this report. So looking forward to it and maybe even having a dog one day soon that actually will be able to utilize that facility. So I, you know, when I, I really truly believe that it might even relieve some of the pressures that we're seeing at Lake Combe Park, because it will provide another alternative for dog users, because I know that's heavily utilized right now. So thank you for the recommendation. I look forward to when it becomes completed.
Anyone else? Boomer and I will meet you in Cowboy up there.
Okay, perfect.
Call for the vote?
You got a name?
Apparently.
I don't like that name.
He doesn't like the name, though.
All right, that passes? That's Broadhead? There you go. Hey, um, Gary, unanimous, I believe, we're moving on now to e-scooters. Sean McCully?
Maybe Bird would be here.
You didn't get one of the department jackets?
I know, I took that as a really unsubtle hint this morning. But I will take the opportunity to try on each of the jackets to see which one fits.
Okay, yes.
My apologies, I'm just opening up. Thank you. Gone. Yeah, apologies. There we go. He was cool down.
Get out.
Perfect. Okay, my apologies.
Oh, good.
Okay, we are here to talk about e-scooters. It's been about a year since we had an update to council, and so purpose of today's presentation is to provide a summary and report on the e-scooter pilot program, explore future options for e-scooters, and provide council with a recommendation for implementing a permanent e-scooter solution. Just as a quick background, the pilot ran from September twenty twenty-one to December twenty twenty-two. Regulations were implemented through conditions on business licenses, and five companies participated throughout the pilot with the primary operators being Roll, Bird, and One. As a quick refresher, conditions during the pilot were e-scooters may be used on sidewalks or trails only, may not be used on streets or roadways. They may be parked in furniture zones only, or in a manner that does not obstruct pedestrian traffic in the absence of a furniture zone. Speed limit of fifteen kilometers an hour must be geo-blocked from accessing high-risk areas such as the Woodlands Skate Park and St. Albert Transit Centers. Riders are required to wear a helmet and be at least sixteen years of age. And of note, the condition that companies must remove e-scooters parked for longer than forty-eight hours and do so within two hours of notice was introduced midway through the pilot after council direction. Just some quick high-level stats, the summer utilized micro-mobility management software in twenty twenty-two. So there was almost twenty thousand trips, fifty thousand kilometers traveled, almost three hundred days of total time utilized on e-scooters. Two point six kilometers was the average trip distance, twenty-one minutes and twenty-nine seconds was the average trip duration, and point five utilization rate, meaning that almost every scooter in the city was used once per day. For council's benefit, there's also an extensive report of stats available attached to this appendix. Public feedback, overall, the city received almost fifteen hundred responses through cultivate the conversation, direct feedback to administration, and through social media campaigns. As a theme, the majority of feedback received on the e-scooter pilot, on the, sorry, on the pilot expressed support for keeping e-scooters in St. Albert. In front of you is a summarized version of what we heard, so there was a helmet requirement was unfeasible. Zone coverage was not uniform with companies setting different operating boundaries where e-scooters would stop functioning. Difficulty finding e-scooters in residential areas. Most companies, or sorry, most complaints involved parked e-scooters in residential areas, even if it was in compliance of the forty-eight hour limit. And there were complaints of e-scooters going much faster than fifteen kilometers an hour, and this issue is related to private e-scooters, which are not regulated and difficult to discern from regulated charity scooters. In analyzing the pilot, administration observed the following considerations. E-scooters were available for use anytime and provide transportation options at times when traditional options such as public transit are limited. So as an example, ten percent of all trips were recorded between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. E-scooters are an accessible mode of transportation for residents who may not have access to personal vehicle due to age, driver's license status, or income. Data confirms e-scooters traveled on nearly every street or pathway in St. Albert, suggesting they are a reliable method of transportation within the city. A twenty twenty report by the National Association of City Transportation Officials states that forty-five percent of e-scooter trips replace a car trip. So if we were applying that metric to St. Albert, it would result in almost nine thousand car trips being replaced by e-scooter trips in twenty twenty-two, suggesting environmental benefits. Stats indicate high levels of e-scooter use in commercial areas, especially downtown and central St. Albert Trail Commercial Corridor. This would also suggest potential downstream benefits to local businesses. Research compiled by e-scooter operator Neuron Mobility in twenty twenty-two highlighted economic benefits associated with e-scooters across Canadian cities. Support suggesting seventy percent of e-scooter trips resulted in a purchase at a local business with an average spend of twenty-seven dollars per trip. And e-scooters are becoming an integrated part of transit systems in major metro areas around the world. Currently Edmonton metro region has Edmonton, St. Albert, and La Dook as the only municipalities active with e-scooter services. The future of e-scooters. After digesting all the data and feedback received through the pilot, administration took the approach of exploring three options for the future of e-scooters in St. Albert. Option one, free market, low regulation. Option two, community-focused, regulation-refined, and option three, no service. For council's benefit, I'll walk through these options and outline the distinctive differences. Option one, free market, low regulation. E-scooter companies may operate their fleets within St. Albert with minimal regulatory oversight, and e-scooters are available for residents with the lowest administrative staff resources and cost. Considerations of this approach are, sorry, e-scooter companies obtain a business license and accountable to conditions similar to the pilot. There would be an unrestricted number of companies and fleet sizes, which would reduce the city's role and involvement in regulating and guiding a private enterprise. This option mitigates budget impacts. As an example, the city utilized micro-mobility software throughout the pilot for obtaining data and monitoring compliance items such as idle times and fleet sizes. Eliminating this software would be a savings of about seventy-five hundred dollars per year. There would be no staffing, no new staffing impacts, as the city would continue to approve companies through business licensing, and there would be no requirement to collect or monitor usage or payments or compliance data. And e-scooter companies would be regulated through the business license bylaw, and shared e-scooter users would be required to comply with current city bylaws, for example, the traffic bylaw and parks bylaw. Option two, community-focused, regulation-refined. E-scooter companies would be regulated through bylaw, licensing, or procurement agreement, or a permitting process. This option would leverage e-scooters to provide community benefit through mitigation of issues and promotion of opportunities identified during the pilot. Considerations of this approach would be, as opposed to regulating through business licensing, e-scooter companies would go through an RFP process where the city could refine the criteria. This option gives the ability to manage the number of operators and fleet sizes, and as an example, the city may want to control the minimum number of scooters that companies need to deploy in certain areas, maybe areas that we're trying to influence or encourage e-scooter use. There would be budget impacts to purchase micro-mobility management software and also potential infrastructure such as physical parking corrals. The software would also provide the ability to monitor the program and execute tailored solutions for, example, identifying non-compliant missed park scooters in real time. This option would require additional staff resource to monitor and administer the program, and it creates flexibility for ease of implementing refined targeted regulations. So as an example, the city would have the ability to build in non-compliance fines as opposed to exercising the hammer and revoking a business license for infractions. Option three would be no service, so e-scooter companies will not be issued business licenses. This option would obviously be the lowest financial impacts to the city. Considerations for this approach, no shared e-scooters would be available for use in the city. There could be a perception as well that an existing service was being removed. Could be a perception the city is not providing a service that many other cities around the world are. It may limit the ability to incorporate future micro-mobility trends such as e-bikes. This is the most financially sustainable option, as there would be no administrative or budget impacts. Our recommendation, after thoroughly deliberating on the three options, administration recommends option one, free market, low regulation. Ultimately, all options had some level of impact to the community, city resources, and budget, but we use the following considerations as rationale for option one. It reduces the city's role and involvement in regulating and guiding this private enterprise and allows local market dynamics to drive the level of service offered by shared e-scooter companies. No service area requirements or deployment minimum and maximums would be mandated. No procurement processes or contracted services would be required. This reduces the city's operating costs and staffing requirements to regulate and administer the program, and there would be no requirement to collect and monitor usage, payments, or compliance data. Shared e-scooters would continue to be available to the public and serve as a viable, accessible, short-distance transportation option and offer environmental and local economic benefits. E-scooter companies would be regulated through the business license bylaw, and shared e-scooter, e-scooter users would be required to comply with current city bylaws, as mentioned, traffic bylaw and parks bylaw as examples. And as new shared micro-mobility technologies such as e-bikes become more common, St. Albert would be positioned to integrate such technology into existing regulatory framework. I assume there'll be no questions, but I'll put out the offer.
Such a thorough presentation.
I got it. Sorry, Sean, we got questions.
Okay, I'll start with Mike.
Thank you. I'd just like to, in recognition of Mike, the other Mike, scoot right on here to some questions.
Oh, my goodness.
So I agree with the post-low option, low overhead, simple business license. What I'm a little bit confused on is the bylaw wording that was attached in the package. First, the first slide say unrestricted number of licenses and unrestricted number of units. But in, in the actual bylaw wording, it says would deploy sixty units. So I was a little bit confused as to what, what we are actually approving. Is it the wording in the bylaw or on conditions for e-scooter operation requirements and restrictions?
You mean the business license conditions? Not, not, there's no bylaw.
Well, business license, it says eleven, says a license may deploy a maximum of sixty e-scooters for use within the city.
Sure. Although we have option.
One, you say.
One, it's unrestricted.
Sure, yeah, so there, if approved, then it would be an update to the conditions within the business license. Yeah.
So that, that's one. So that's good. The, I looked at Red Deer, Edmonton, and Calgary. They all have no helmet bylaws. They, they have scooters that Red Deer, for example, can go twenty kilometers an hour. They can be sixteen and no helmet. Why, why are we going with the must-have a helmet? Because like I said, Red Deer, Edmonton, Calgary, all no helmet, Calgary, twenty kilometers again. Um, do we have unsafe drivers here or why?
They also don't um require helmets on adults on bikes in those misguided, we're unique in that, that might be the answer, yeah.
Oh, so I'm just trying to understand when, is it? Yeah.
No, sure, I I mean, as a I I hope an answer that would suffice, I I believe we were trying to stay consistent uh within that. And and as uh Aaron alluded to, um, we are saying consistent within the helmets for for bikes as well. Um, and just staying consistent within the traffic bylaw for that purpose. So um, that that's the reason that it was implemented. Um, you know, initially at the the beginning of the pilot. Um, we haven't entertained that piece within this, but of course, that's, I mean, something of of discussion, it would just take some some updating to 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 bylaw.
After this, it it was interesting, I went to the River Fest, clean up. And Lime Scooter was there giving free scooter rides. And they said, well, why don't you just take take a scooter? And and I said, well, I already have the app and I, you know, but I didn't have a helmet. So they were they were under the impression that you they could give it out to the public and go for a ride, but really you couldn't because there was no no helmet. And I I'm just not sure that regulating a helmet when in fact probably half the people I see riding scooters don't have a helmet.
Do we have any data where it was a single ticket given out?
I I can I can answer that, so we didn't receive anything as far as as far as injuries go and and those types of complaints and and those types of tickets, no. Um, there is more data being collected, I forget the organization that's doing it, Lucha might love to. UFA, yes, correct. And uh, and so there might have been a little bit of a, uh, you know, we want to see some of the results that come back from that. Uh, maybe at some of the initial discussions on this, uh, we don't have that data available at the moment. Um, but no, as far as responses to the city or or feedback to the city, we've uh we haven't received anything on injuries. Uh, we assume there would be scrapes and bruises, um, but as far as significant injuries, we haven't heard.
I mean, it it just it just seems to I I don't know, I I I I agree, we want to have a safe community uh for sure, but would it uh, is it a restriction that number one, isn't being followed from personal observation? Isn't being can't be enforced or isn't being enforced? And therefore, is it is it restricting the amount of users that might actually go on and eat scooter?
Yeah, I would say those are all fair and good questions. I I I think when we first introduced the pilot program, the the recommendation that administration brought forward was conscious of of safety. Um, uh, some liability concerns in there. Um, but I think what we learned through the pilot is that users were quite clear that it it was cumbersome, it was restrictive. It uh unfeasible is the word we used. So uh therein lies a bit of a challenge where we're 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 trying to uh make sure that works for public safety and and mitigate some some risk and some liability. Um, but it is a bit of a a barrier for users to use.
Because I I think most not, well, yeah, most scooter use is kind of that spontaneous. And I don't have a helmet when I'm being spontaneous. Is that something that we could look at in terms of?
You want to remove that requirement?
Yeah, yeah.
Where would you license requirement that would be in?
It's in the traffic bylaw.
Traffic bylaw, yeah. That's what that's well, I'm not gonna, that that's not impossible, but that's one of the challenges potentially be facing.
Okay, and I suggested.
Yeah, I I just want to make it open up for more people, right? If it's going to be a success and we want low regulation is what option one is all about. Uh, and there's huge precedent set all around us, it just seems a little bit.
Is that a notice motion to amend the traffic bylaw to remove?
Yeah, that'll be get notice motion.
Yeah, that's what you want to do.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, the the other the other one is uh I noticed that the other cities don't say two hours of reporting. They, the providers monitor and know exactly where a scooter is. So they know whether it's been rented in forty eight hours or not, and they uh therefore know that it sat idle for two two days. And they automatically go and move it. Our our rules say it has to be reported by a resident. So is there some reason why that's different? That it spells out that it has to be reported by somebody before it's picked up and moved?
Uh, yeah, I mean, as a response to that, um, you know, based on the resource that we had, um, it wasn't something we were able to constantly monitor. Uh, we can, we do monitor, like there was some monitoring going on. Um, but it was something that we weren't able to maybe um uh fully dive in on and constantly monitor monitor all all um e-scooters within the city in live time. And so we did rely on a bit of an honesty piece with the the businesses that they were following it. Um, and then, of course, if we did, if we received a complaint, then we knew, and it was something that we would act on it and report straight away. Um, so, yeah, it it was something that, uh, yeah, we just unfortunately due to due to staffing resource, we're not able to maybe monitor it, so we couldn't commit to it in saying that. Uh, but it is some.
So maybe I maybe I didn't make my comment clear.
Okay.
Is that the company Lime, let's say, for example, it they monitor and know exactly where their scooters are. Nobody has to report it to them, they know it hasn't been used for two days, it's sitting at the end of or it's sitting in in the kiddie park behind my house. They know it's not supposed to be there, and they automatically through their own monitoring.
There that's
that's the, yeah, so um our our bylaws or our rules, business license says it has to be picked up if reported by a person in two hours. But the other bylaw or other business rules, they pick it up automatically.
So I think there's two components to that, right? One is what is the responsibility of the company to maintain their fleet so we don't get stuff all over forever? Uh, but I think that the second piece is probably complimentary, if we do get a complaint.
Yeah.
Then you've got a two-hour window to service that specific complaint on top of the regulatory piece.
Yeah, well, well said. Um, e- exactly, and and there's there's um oh, not over that.
I guess the question is, why is there two rules? Red Red Deer, Edmonton, Calgary, company monitors, picks them up, has moved. Our rules say only if reported by a resident.
Yeah, maybe, no, so maybe I will add that piece, there's there's a part of this with the software that we we utilize that allows us to to verify, right? If we get a complaint, residence says this has been parked in front of, you know, we can log into the same essentially system or a system that would give us the same information. It says, yeah, it's been parked there for two or three or or four days. And we can, you know, remind the company, hey, you have an obligation to meet these rules, please comply and and see scooter sort of thing. But what rules do we have, I guess, so it, you know, is there a forty eight hour thou shalt clean up all your stuff? Or do they just sit wherever they want? I guess that's maybe it's related to parking corrals, but I think that's the genesis.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, what's the responsibility of the company?
Yeah.
On an a a regular ongoing basis, and then separate from that, what is the complaint methods? Right, which which is the two hours, that's clear, but what's the responsibilities? Yeah, so I I think when you're on like we to 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 rework that so that the onus is on the company to come and do that, and no, we're not just relying on the uh resident reports.
Yeah.
You're saying?
Yeah, absolutely, because it because it, like the other jurisdictions, it clearly says the company picks it up. And then another separate line that says, and if a resident reports it, they have two hours to to move it, they're two separate things, our wording currently is has those mushed together.
I I appreciate the clarity on it because the intent is what you're speaking to, yeah, so we'll get that, we'll get that cleaned up.
And and I I should say, I made three reports on three different each one of the scooters. One was at the farmer's market, was broken when I walked into the farmer's market. I reported it, and when I walked out, it was gone. So that the I'm I'm giving kudos here, the system does work. Uh, similar to the one in the park behind my house, it was picked up and gone within two hours of me walking the dog, it probably wasn't even that long. So that the system, the the vendors, it does work, but I I just wondered why it was was different. The the other the other weird one for me is that it says we can't ride in a parking lot. Our our rules say that their parking lots are you can't ride a scooter in a parking lot. Why, why is that?
Safety. Tied into your first question in relation to our traffic bylaw and the fact that we write, you you can actually ride uh a scooter and a bike on a sidewalk and say, no, you can't do that in Edmonton. You can't ride a scooter for in a uh off of the trail or sidewalk or roadway. Our the parking lot isn't considered a roadway technically, but you're you're you you bring up an interesting nuance.
Yeah, I want to ride just up to up to Walmart.
It's probably tied in, it's probably just tied into our traffic bylaw.
And I I believe the intention is is to not have these e-scooters riding on private properties. Right, you've got a shopping center and they've got a a parking lot that, you know, they're not riding these on some private businesses' property. And probably worse, parking them and leaving them on somebody's private property happens, yeah.
Yeah, I was just, again, trying to think, I'm going to ride my e-scooter to Walmart and I'm going to have to stop at the bar, you know, a mile away and walk through their parking lot, carry my case of beer back.
And case of beer to your back while you scooter home? No helmet.
No helmet. Uh, no, I just, and you think of some of those big, you know, where Lowe's is, they're massive, like, am I going to stop at Aaron Ridge sidewalk and then walk all the way to Lowe's and bring a two-by-four back to my scooter or?
As as an example, I was sorry, I want you to chime in here. Uh, I mean, this
two-by-four is a board.
This is the complexity of e-scooters because it is, it is new, it's new technology.
Yeah.
Um, we're not accustomed, we're all accustomed to getting in our car and driving to a shopping center and parking in their parking lot because they want us to shop there. Um, but we're not accustomed yet as a society to riding our e-scooter, parking at the parking lot and shopping there. Right, so th- there's going to be a few of these gray areas that we're going to have to work through as as public in all parts of the, you know, the region and and around the world, you know, become more accustomed to micro mobility.
Yeah.
So I don't think it would be a restriction if you owned your own e-scooter to drive it to Walmart, park it and go in and shop and leave, but why is it?
They, I I mean, you're you're going, you're going to take it away from there, you're assuming that you're coming there. I know in speaking to Jillian at the mall, they call constantly to have their their uh e-scooters picked up because they are taken to the mall and they're basically abandoned in the mall. And and so they create hazards in front of the doorways and uh and likewise, so they end up owning cars to have them removed, so I think that's part of the challenge. If you have your own, you you go there and then you take it home when you leave, not necessarily if you are, you could be a one-way rider into the to the mall. I think that's one of the concerns in one of the projects, it's what ties into kind of private property.
Again, not enforced.
Well, it is enforced by Walmart and Lowe's and and so you're putting the burden on them to contact the company to get the scooters moved off. Otherwise, they just say, we're going to put them in storage and you're not going to be able to get them.
Yeah.
Which circles back to my comment about automatic pickup by the companies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Being being reported. My my last question, I guess, uh, they've took time for others, but um the other rules and regs say one rider, they're very explicit about one rider. And we're silent on that in our rules and regs and uh one one rider is a concern for me that I have seen so many parents with little kids
Yeah.
on the front of them, it's like, to me, and and no helmet. So so uh I I don't know if that's something else that could be added into this before the final
Yeah.
draft of it, but uh to me, that's a bigger safety risk than riding without a helmet.
Well, that's uh no, no problem on that one, uh, maybe something we might have even taken for granted along the way with them.
In the traffic bylaw or the I think it's got to follow.
I don't know.
The conditions.
Could be. Could be.
Um, Ken, you're next.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, thanks for the questions, Mike, actually, you I addressed some of them, but I guess and normally, unlike you, I would favor more of an open market, low regulation, but just from the last conversation, we've already added potentially three regulations. So, I mean, I mean, I, so I I guess your questions arising out of that. Um, so you're right now, you identify you're working administration as part of a provincial working group municipalities with these micro mobility programs. And you're really, you're feeding into this whole injury prevention center that's actually looking at all of the in risks and the safety. But if we adopt option one, we don't buy this software and we don't continue to participate in this program, huh?
Uh, is that from true populace? No, so we would still be, yeah, no, um, just for clarity on that piece, no, we would still be, we would still be participating in that.
So how would we, if we're really low regulation, are we then relying on the companies to provide the data versus us providing the data?
Oh, pardon me, yeah, sorry, I'm, I I apologize, uh, I'm 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 reaching back to the S M A over here. Uh, no, the the hospitals are providing the data that feed it.
The hospitals are providing the data to the injury prevention, so, okay, so, I mean, it wouldn't be, you you're not getting a some, it's not part of the populist software.
Correct, that's sorry, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because that's what I was concerned about, if we were going to move away from actually using that. Um, okay, I'm, I, yeah, I I hmm, so why didn't, so your recommendation, option one, basically goes back to what it was prior to us looking at some of the feedback that we got from residents that where we created corrals, where we created limits. So, and that seemed to be successful, it seemed to be popular with the community. It led to fewer complaints, to me anyways, why would we move away from that? Because, I mean, we basically cover that in our plan too, right?
Yeah, I I I think that's that's a really good question, it's something that we we mulled over. I think what we learned through the pilot is that um making this this service available comes with some 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 staff time and some some dollars to sort of make it happen. We didn't, there wasn't really a a business create uh case created where we we started this pilot, but we sort of learned from it. And so we sort of thought, well, I think we're trying to be very prudent with with tax dollars and making sure that we're putting forth something that's financially sustainable. So we tried to find a way to enable this without requiring, you know, a bunch of staff time and money to go into it. We sort of felt like this was, you know, maybe a happy middle. But we recognize that, you know, there were improvements made through the pilot that that helped address some of the community issues. So it was, it was, it was challenging to sort of, I guess, land on this option. This fundamentally is is why this took so long to get back, there were a number of discussions. Option two is effectively a new service level for the city.
Yeah.
Uh, that's what it is, right? And it will require resources um to manage it, right? If it, so option two is an RFP and um it's an addition of that.
Do we, and but I didn't see a, okay, so, I mean, if we um, don't go with the recommendation from administration and choose to go with the alternative, do we basically put it back for you to create a business case and the way we go and and do that? So, I mean, um, okay, because, I mean, like, uh, I I'm not going to get into bait, but, I mean, I'm, to me, that's would just seem like we are, we solved a problem, and then we're going to go back and recreate a problem that we had. And don't get me wrong, I'm all for open market, but I mean, um, uh, and believe me, I'm saying, I would love to say, if you wanted to come in, let's do it. We do that with cannabis stores, we do that with liquor stores, we do that with other other, but we do still tie restrictions to that, right? So, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm leery about moving back to option one and then just reliving and rehashing um a lot of uh scooters laying all over the place and I know, but I mean, so, yeah, I agree, so I don't want to rehash that. So I don't want to do that, but I that was what kind of, I'm just trying to get to thinking around why we would move back from why would we go backwards from option one be the recommendation for two? That's, I would just say seeking that clear.
Okay, but specifically because we tried to avoid adding a service level for the city. And I think um mechanism to regulate option one is through the business license.
So we wouldn't have, we would have to wait for that business pace to come back before we would actually know some of the financial implications. Or, I mean, we don't have any, we have a rough idea, I think.
Do we have a rough idea?
Yeah.
Speak to the alternative.
Yep, I can speak to to a ballpark.
Yeah.
And so I'm not going to be held to this. I hope. No, no, I can give you a pretty good idea. So, uh, if we were talking about things like implementing physical parking corrals. Uh, you know, be looking at around two thousand twenty five hundred dollar per corral, depending on how that looks. Uh, we would be looking at about eight to maybe ten hours a week for staffing resource. Um, and I'm trying to think of some of the other major costs. Oh, the soft, sorry, my apologies, the software would be about seventy five hundred a year.
Then you would need one dedicated individual or.
Eight hours a week.
Would it would all be had done internally?
Uh, correct, yes.
I mean.
I I guess we could.
It would be in addition essentially of about half an F T E, I think is what we came down.
I think it's a little more than that.
Something about. I'm sorry. I mean, I I realize it's upper ballpark, but it just helps me today.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thanks, man.
So I'm going to go show you next, but I have one quick question. So. It was pointed out by Mike that the business license conditions does currently say sixty ish. Can that not remain in a free market? You just say, here's your business license, but you're only allowed to have sixty. Are you just worried about counting the number like?
Yeah, it becomes an enforcement piece, right? And so the 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 software very easily allows us to log in and. See exactly what's what's available. So within minutes, we can, yep, for sixty versus ninety, we're not going to have.
Right? But we don't monitor every business that we have conditions on their business license. We don't monitor them that closely. Because I'm thinking that would be, for me, that was the one thing. There was too many. And I I completely disagree. I think. The the issue at the beginning was there was excitement. They brought in too many, but they had no idea what what was required to service in Albert. Now they know they'll bring in what's required for the market. So I don't think there's going to be the same issues that we.
But if you have five companies instead of two.
But again, if they're if they're scooters aren't getting ridden because they have too many and they're not going to bring as many. But that one thing, the number of scooters, I think we could probably add as a condition of a business license. And then that's it. Don't monitor if they're complying. Just this is your condition. You trust them. Uh, that might help.
Yeah, my my only concern with that part is is does it become at what point does it not become economically viable for? For the scooter companies to to operate. And we did see some fluctuations through the pilot. Um, Sean spoke to five different operators with sort of three primary, um, but some sort of pulling on and we received any indication.
We we would be down like I I could probably confidently say that we were we're down to about two. Uh, companies that would probably participate at the moment.
And but the business license conditions is not approved by council, completely in your realm. So if they come to you and say, we only have sixty, this guy only has sixty, we feel we need three hundred in this community, you could just change the conditions, couldn't you?
We we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're what we're suggesting is. In the option two, we're going to dedicate some some time to making sure that we are putting together the best program and we're responsive and nimble to. Challenges that we're seeing in the community. With option one, we're sort of saying hands off. We're not going to.
Yep.
Bunch of staff time to this. Here's here's the rules as they exist. Go and operate.
But you're taking out the rule of the number of scooters, so.
Yeah, I mean, because there's this this like an enforcement monitoring piece to it, right? I mean, it. It's probably a fair point. There's probably some of the stuff that we could we could do. But I worry that, you know, where we sort of start adding, next thing you know, we're we're running out of option two. So let's just start working.
But I think it would also, you know, as opposed to pegging a number, right? That would have to be a discussion because again, we we it's sixty good enough for is it? Is it three hundred to?
Yeah.
We don't.
It's not a.
It would have to be a business.
Business is both the total in the community. So whether you have five businesses or one. Okay, I'm going to go, Shelley.
Okay, um, I had a few questions here and I agree with a lot of the comments here. One of the companies had requested that they want it seventy five to a hundred. If you don't allow that, will they still maintain their contract with sixty?
It's a big question. I don't know that we can answer that.
It's it's a tough one to answer. Uh, we would. We can only assume. Um, so I I wouldn't want to speak for the company, but that is something you're correct. We did hear. Uh, I think one of the companies in particular said that they would need about eighty to be, uh, you know, financially viable. So. Um, yeah, that's.
And if you have a citywide number, then it can work. Like if you've got, you know, two forty four companies or how, you know, just. As long as it's regulated, not everybody says all of a sudden I want a hundred twenty five, then we've got five hundred scooters all of a sudden.
I guess I I would say too, to the opposite side of that, they they wouldn't have more scooters than. And, you know, they they want to be optimizing their scooters as well. And if if they have too many, then they would remove them and and take them to areas that they would be more.
For the market drives it.
Exactly. So there would be hopefully that piece regulating.
The other thing that kind of surprised me is, I mean, realistically, like May and like summer was the high zones. It's really not that long this season. And so when you on that data that you purchased, like the software, the six thousand dollar software, that gave you the details of usage like that, right? Like number per month in it. So it's it's valuable information from that software data as well. And why is it up to seventy five hundred from six thousand? It jumped up that much in one year?
Um, I with full transparency, we were given a little bit of a uh, welcome uh, to the company friendly contract. So.
Be nine next year.
Yeah. Exactly.
And you know, the bird or I can't remember what the companies email me during the niche pilot. They have the data, like we don't need.
Yeah.
Data. They you could just. You should just survey the lime bird or whatever, say, how many rides each have.
I I would say the one thing that I would mention that the advantage, uh, because of the pilot and having five different operators, it was nice to have consistent data for that piece. I mean, that was that was an advantage to having that that's after throughout the pilot. Um, so that that's, you know, one advantage of of having that. But yeah, but you're absolutely right. We do. We do collect data from the.
In that sense.
Which is, it was it's more robust. Like we were able to, I think, within the reports of shows mapping and all of that. We would have never known that they were used all over on every street.
I just don't see the need to have that data on go. Right? I don't care where cabs are driving in St. Albert for us, right?
But we don't even have a cap.
You know what I'm saying?
Okay. And then the other question, um, you know, you had you had mentioned city staff had to pull some of them out of the river. Uh, was it the companies that notified you that they were in the river or did somebody report that? Did they even know they were there?
Yeah.
Maybe located under water, so to speak.
I'm aware of one that was reported.
We're very quick to go and. Get it out.
They know the city too.
No, the Stanford, I think it was.
Yeah, the company.
Yeah.
On the helmets, I know we want to mitigate risk at at some point, but I can see situations where the helmet, you know, is infeasible for people as well. Can you not have helmets suggested or highly suggested? Can that not be a wording? And then you're covering your risk and and I mean, find promote people to use it, but you don't have to police it.
But the traffic by law can't say you have it recommended. It's a black and white. That's where that's where it shows up.
That's what I would say. The by law, I think, needs to be very unequivocal.
Findable, right?
Like in our education and messaging surrounding this, right? That that could be certainly our communication.
That's all the questions they have is. It's awesome. Is she now you're up? Thank you. So just for clarity from the pilot, what are we taking off now? Because we have, we're taking off the number of company or the number of scooters. And we're letting them go anywhere. And like, are we basically removing all the pilot restrictions that we that we put on last year or what are we keeping? What are we taking off?
Uh, I would I would answer that with, there's not a lot being removed. It's just that. What what we had for dedicated staff was not sustainable. So there is removal of some of our dedicated staff hours to it. Um, there are things like the virtual parking corrals, for instance, uh, those would remain. Uh, going forward. Exactly existing, sorry. And, um. You know, and what you say implementing new corrals, that would be something that that would not be as as better tape. Um, but yeah. With so as far as removing, sorry, I'll go back to that. Uh, it would mostly be a lot of less staffing resource. Um, because there wouldn't be as much monitoring of the program, uh, reporting, uh, maybe not as much comms work that might go on with some of it too. Um, so, yeah.
Geo fences.
So the fencing would be there, but the number of units would not be. And would we still have, we're still going to keep the two hour pickup requirement? What would be the consequences of them not meeting the two hour pickup requirement? Would they be fined or what would be the consequence?
Within the option that we're recommending, um, unfortunately, we wouldn't have uh, fines incorporated in. Uh, so we would have to be playing a little bit of a honor system with the companies and hoping that they would do it uh, based on conditions. Um, ultimately, we have the hammer to revoke a business license. Um, so I guess there's always that piece. Um, but as far as regulating and fine tuning and. Uh, I guess closely monitoring some of those items, we we wouldn't be able to undertake those in option one.
During the pilot, were there consequences? I can't remember what we did in the past year on that. If they didn't do it in the two hours, what were the consequences up to this point?
No, there was there was no fines built in for that. Um, I will admit too, they were on a bit of an audition, uh, not knowing how the permanent program may look. And so I think they were on their best behavior. Uh, but you know what? To to their defense, um, that, you know, that they could they could comply with that, uh, you know, for their lifetime. So. Um, no, that we didn't have any issues and we didn't get to a point of of even needing to look into the the fines.
Okay. The other thing was that you have been the report that some communities are charging more like per scooter and that sort of thing. So. Like I I see that we're losing a really a revenue opportunity here to to repay the costs. Why are we not charging at least a per scooter pricing?
So I guess I would start with, um, the the revenue generating piece, um, seems a little deceptive and and you know. For the most part, a lot of them are built out to try and break even. Um, if you were to look at a lot of municipalities, I don't believe you would see a lot of revenue generation. It would be just bringing it closer to covering off costs. For maybe say the the parking corrals and and software they utilize and uh, the enforcement pieces and and the monitoring of the program, those types of things. Um, you know, they also would uh, do an RFP process where they could start building in uh, those revenue pieces. So. Um, that's what I would I would say to that. Uh, that that most are trying their 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 goal for the most part is to to more or less do a break even cost analysis.
So I'm just looking at the fact that we're not this. I feel like we're kind of. Trying to think of the words, but. As I think what Councilman Kai had to say really sums up also what I feel. So I normally said, Sergeant Ken, I I obviously agree with this is. I feel like some of the things that we added to take away the concerns for that the public had. Are not being kept going and yet we're doing this permanently. And I'm and and we have an opportunity to just increase the fees of, for example, if we increased it by the fifteen dollars per. Um, unit that was being used, it would help offset any of those costs. And and also encourage them to really evaluate how many they wanted to put on the road so that it didn't go into an overcrowding that we had initially in the pilot. So. I I guess I'm just trying to figure out, because I I mean, I'm prepared to put forward motions to amend this so that it. It it keeps whatever was in the pilot continuing. So that's why I'm asking specifically, what are we doing that was not in the pilot? Because I think that the what regulations were in the pilot, did you see that did not? Help the situation or were not necessary? Because I I don't want just best behavior going on here. I want to make sure that we keep it going because we're not going to be reviewing this again. So that's why I'm asking specifically what regulations did we add last year that we're no longer keeping as a result of recommendations? I didn't see that chart in our backgrounder. So it's the software, right? Because the thing is that when we say we had like a limited number of companies, as the mayor said. We could put in the requirements that they send us and a report with a number of units on the road monthly. And and then we would be looking at compliance on a monthly basis. Like there's ways for this company to show compliance, us us having to put extra money as well. Um, so I'm just trying to figure out like there's many ways to solve a problem. So we're we're no, that issue of no longer allowing or limiting the number of scooters and. And is there anything else that we're taking out other than just because the clutter was an issue?
From a regulation perspective, right? I I I think. Yeah, I mean, I I think if you want to focus just on the regulations, I would say. The ability to to nimbly add virtual parking corrals. Um, would be something that we would remove. So if we sort of identify down the road that there's a problematic area and we want to add a virtual corral or we want to add a a slow zone. Uh, because there's been some near misses or something like that. We lose the ability to do that uh, easily. We could probably still do it. It's just going to be a more challenging and cumbersome and. And probably uh, time consuming process. This way.
Okay.
Because we're not, we're not, we don't staff that are sort of managing it or we don't have, we wouldn't have the software to sort of go in and and be able to instantly make those changes.
Okay, so is the only thing not the addition of the virtual corrals? Everything else is staying the same?
From a regulation perspective, I I believe so.
Okay. And so the other thing is just about the compliance. I realize that we were doing this on the honor system, but is. Couldn't we put something in the by law to specifically say like we have the opportunity to issue fines if they're not compliant? Not that you would do it in the first attempt necessarily, but if you're seeing a trend where the company is not being compliant or just they have the two hours. Because it's really when you get a call that there's a two hour issue. So until then, there's not really an issue for the city. And then they called and that said that the day later, they still hadn't picked it up. And then you could say, you know, if this continues, that we will be issuing some kind of non compliance. Um, fees. To encourage them to participate. And not just go on an honor system. Could that also be added then?
But I think that that would have to be a by law issue and municipal action, right? That wouldn't be.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just. With our expert on this one, with within the business by license by law, we don't have. Um, a mechanism right now, like we we find and then we spend licenses or current practice with any business that's non compliant. Um, so we could look at bringing in an amendment that would allow us to impose a. A fine or something like that or a fee. Um, in a situation where someone's non compliance.
Yeah. Like I think that either doing that and or saying like. And so many numbers, if it exceeds a, and we can you can make up whatever number you feel is reasonable. So complaints a year that were not followed after they had the two hour, they may not be issued. That business license the following year, like there needs to be some kind of incentive just to make sure that everybody stays on board. And that way we don't having constantly the call back, call back, call back. I think it will also just reduce the number of calls to you. So if they don't call up, if they don't pay up to two hours and they call back the next day, the next day, you're recording this over and over again. And it would be much easier if they. Didn't do it. They got one phone call and then it was addressed because everybody's motivated to address the situation. Right? I mean, so I guess. When this comes forward for approval from council, like do you? Um, are you intending or is there a possibility we need to do a motion to say? I'd like this to implement consequences to non compliance. Um, and come forward, it would come for that by law or it would come through a separate by law?
I think it would absolutely take a motion um, in order to alter a by law.
Okay, I can put forward something and I'll just type it up if you'd like, Mayor, because I think that there should be something going on there, both with. That and also limiting the number of overall scooters and having them, um. Having the the scooter company provide the data. We don't need to pay the extra money for that. So I'll put that forward in a second.
Yeah, hold on, Counselor Hughes. First of all, I think you don't have to require the data. They'll just give it to you. I'm not sure, but, um. Should we should put that in as an IR maybe like what? What's the motion that's required to? Because I think there's some confusion even here. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as we look at the traffic by law, we look at the business license by law, there's probably a couple of ways to skin this.
Yeah. Why don't you do that as an IR, Counselor Hughes?
Okay, but this is the the companies are opening up in six weeks. So. I mean. Both the limiting of the number or if we're going to do it and also just the consequences, they should be aware of what the consequences are before they sign on with us. So that they know if they want to be compliant or not, or they want to be interested in doing this or not. Um, so if I do an IR and then we do it, we're looking at. There will be nothing this year, basically implemented before close to the end of the season at best. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that we probably take the motion and through our research, we bring the report back if there's some. Needed or not needed, we'll make that as the recommendation. Otherwise, I think else can move with it. That will save.
Okay, so what am I doing or not doing?
Your your my emotion, you make it a notice of motion for the by law.
Might make some massaging of the wording, but we can do that after. Yeah, the intent is still there today. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I will do a notice of motion, um. Consider this now to um, to provide options for both limit limiting the either the over and all number or just a number per company. Because I think there's two choices here. We could just say there's going to be a maximum of three hundred and if only two apply. It would be that, but we could also you'd have a minimum of fifty or sixty per unit. So. That way the companies know if they're in for sixty, it's great. And if, but if only to apply that they could potentially put out more if they so chose. I think that's one option. And then also just consequences for non compliance. I think that that needs to be clear as well. So. I'll be putting forward notions that administration provides those options to us, um. And it will be sooner than later to try to get this implemented. That way they can do that. If that's what you want to do, I would prefer just to do it. Uh, right now. And word it. I realize it's on the fly, but uh, I'd rather do it now just because I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about this, the fact that the companies aren't going to be, you know. I'm concerned about this, the fact that the companies aren't going to be in a, on a limbo zone. And the one thing I know with business, regardless of who it is, is they like to have something concrete and solid. They at least know what the rules are. And if we do notice a motion, they will not have that ability to know what they're agreeing to when they bring it for their business licenses or requests for them the next month. So I'm looking at you, Mike, so you're the only person on the screen that I'm looking at right now. Um, but I, I'm looking at just being fair to, to the businesses that are going to be participating so that they have clarity. And if I do notice a motion, they won't have that ability. So I'm looking at, and to you, uh, Mr. Fletcher, how, how we can handle this and, and both accomplish the goals of having this debated and having clarity for the businesses.
Yeah, we can't do it today because no one actually knows what the motion should read. Seriously, I've got Marta online.
This would be an amendment, Kathy. Sorry, Mayor. It would be an amendment. So this is not, doesn't have to be a separate thing. They're bringing forward what we have. We can do an amendment and say change the regulatory framework to be this and change the regulatory framework to be, um, for the
But we're bylaw, right?
Yeah.
So that's the confusion.
Different bylaws.
Yeah. No one knows what we're amending. So it's not just the conditions of the business licenses, other pieces involved. For the enforcement side.
Can we waive the twenty one days? Um, I'm looking at this. I might know, I'm just asking from a staffing perspective to get the backgrounder. Can we do it for like the beginning of April?
April fourth.
April fourth would be
Would that be possible?
I'm sure as soon as they can figure what you need to do, then we can waive for sure. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to bring it for, I'll put something forward as soon as possible today, like in the next hour, hopefully. So that way at least you could see it. And then if it's possible to waive the twenty one days from a staff background or perspective, I'd like to do that. Just again, this is to be fair to the companies. So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
That's a broadhead. You're up next. Can't hear you, Wes.
It's interesting debate, uh, or conversation over over e-scooters, um. Honestly, if we're going to consider adding half a FTE to monitor this whole program, there's a whole lot of other priorities that I'd like to see adding a half an FTE to before we do this. Um, my question is, is that are we considering raising the speed now to twenty kilometers an hour? Is, is is that a consensus or is, or do we have to make a motion or, or what's the plan here?
I only heard Mike talk about it and he's not really worried about it.
Councilor Broadhead, yeah, I, I raised that as an example of uh, not requiring helmets and yet they are allowed to ride a higher speed. I would not want to raise the speed. Uh, I think fifteen kilometers an hour is, is great. And, uh,
What do you base that on? I, I mean, you, you, you made the case that Calgary and Edmonton and Red Deer do twenty. Why, why is fifteen good? I mean, we only got twenty one negative points. The following is a summary of total feedback points in the context of the above classifications. Thirty five positive points, thirty five mixed points, twenty one negative points. On how many rides? Honestly?
Yeah, no.
Let this program run, put it out there, let the free market decide how many they're going to have here. If they, if it goes crazy. Like, this is a business. They're not going to flood this uh, small community here of seventy thousand to be sure. But they're not going to come dump five hundred here because they, they won't make any money. They're, they're going to put the exact number of things here that, uh, that makes sense to them from a business perspective.
So Wes, is the one thing you're concerned about is you, you would be okay with twenty kilometers an hour?
Well, sure. And then, and why are we choosing to want to regulate this to death?
We have to regulate speed, just like we would with car, right?
Fair enough.
Would be traffic bylaw again? Okay, so for now, the traffic bylaw is gone in front of us, Council Broadhead. So, um, again.
The, the other interesting point is wait until we get e-bikes coming around, uh, you know, rental e-bike rentals. So, anyway.
So I'm, I'm agreeing with you. If you want the twenty kilometers an hour, that would require a motion because it's the traffic bylaw. So
I don't think this is a business license.
Twenty kilometers an hour? Oh, okay, I was wrong. Okay, sir.
It's
Because that's how they govern.
When we, when we set up, when we set up the program as a pilot, it was council's direction to go with the lower sixteen or fifteen kilometers hour over what the other ones were doing. So that can easily be changed up.
Okay, okay. Just, I'll just make sure he's done. Wes, do you have any more questions?
Uh, no, that was just my only question. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to take any action on the speed? Are you good for now?
I, I guess the overall, my question is, is then are, are we going to start to consider helmets and speed and stuff? Because if we are, and we're going to throw this open, I'd like to throw up in the twenty kilometer an hour. I just to keep it consistent with the other, uh, cities that are actually doing this. So.
Okay, so I did hear that that is a condition of the business license, so we could do that today, if you want. For sure.
Fair enough.
Okay, uh,
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the only thing I'll just, just want to step in just because I, I remember that coming from transportation. I mean, they had feedback on it. I, I believe it was based um, because they're operating on sidewalks and trails. So a lot of subject matter expert in that area. Oh, thank God.
He's been very quiet, listening about traffic bylaw of like a bu- bunch of times. Go ahead, Mr. Schick.
Dave's, Dave's up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, maybe I'll let Dave always look to legal counsel first before you open your mouth. So Dave was on here first. I'll let him speak if he has anything about the bylaw.
Hey, first of all, before you go anywhere, uh, your background is awesome. That's beautiful.
Painting.
Thank you.
You paint that yourself?
I wish I could say it was my art, but no, it is not. My apologies, Dave.
Dean, I thought you sit in your office every day and paint stuff like that. Anyway, so if I may, um, this, this concept of putting things like required helmets and speed limits as conditions of a business license makes me very, very nervous. First of all, how are you going to enforce them? I mean, we put these things in bylaws so that if people breach them, we can issue tickets, we can take them to court. We can, you know, we can find them. I guess what I would ask council to consider is having things like mandatory helmets and, and maximum speed limits. Is that a sine qua non? Is that a condition of even, even having scooters at all in your view? Or would you be prepared to proceed with a scooter program and then later on, you know, or indeed have a different motion asking administration to come back with amendments to the traffic bylaw to accomplish these things. I think they belong, these kinds, these kinds of conditions belong. This, this kind of, dare I say it, regulation belongs in it, in the traffic bylaw, which regulates the behavior of users of the road. And I don't think it belongs as a condition of a license at all. It's just, it's just too complicated or too, too difficult to enforce if, if that's all you've got.
No, I agree. So helmets is in the traffic bylaw.
Already, yes.
Yeah, and, and and that essentially was because we require it for bikes. So let's do it for scooters. And but we could change that through a motion to amend the traffic bylaw, not today. But the twenty kilometers, it's not so much that, I think, because that's I see that as a business license condition because it's the company that governs the like they set the maximum. And so that's a business license condition. You can't bring them in unless you put the maximum speed limit on your scooter, right? So that's, it's not the individual riding scooter that ramps it up and then gets the ticket. It's the business. So I see that as slightly different from a traffic bylaw. Am I correct?
But now, Mayor, if, if I may, there's no reason why a, a maximum speed limit couldn't be stipulated in both places. What I'm saying is that if somebody breaks the speed limit, what are we going to do about it if it's only a condition of a license?
Yeah, especially with some of the private ones out there.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I'd be very curious to hear what Mr. Schick thinks about this because Mr. Schick knows a whole lot about the traffic bylaw.
Yeah, and thank you very much. So you, you guys pretty much summed it up very well. So that's the difference is the benefit of having it captured within the traffic bylaw also provides regulation around those with private use. So the speed limit, to your point, Mayor Harret, um, the reference on the speed limitations or restrictions are ultimately on the business uh, that set the, the speeds for those units. And so that's direct with them to which helps on the enforcement side because you know, I, I don't want to speak out of turn and probably someone from enforcement could talk a lot, but it would be difficult in terms of enforcing high speeds. There'd probably be something more so in alignment with not operating a e-scooter in a safe manner or something along that line to if they were looking for a violation on outside. Aside from something tangible like a helmet and whatnot. But, um, realistically, um, the speed limit was established in recognition of what we where we're establishing the use of e-scooters on the sidewalk and on our trails and thus the conflict of pedestrians and, and, uh, e-scooter users now was looked at for the lower speeds in comparison, some of the other cities that have the higher speeds are actually mandated to use the e-scooters on the roadways. So there's a conflict with, with vehicles and e-scooters and less likelihood and they have dedicated infrastructure with bike lanes and whatnot. Some of these cities that are maybe, uh, using the, the application of the e-scooter is a little bit larger than we are. Um, and so there's a separation potentially and, uh, um, you know, the sharing of cycle areas with e-scooters is maybe a little more in line with, with the speeds of each other at the higher speed. So that was a consideration as well.
Perfect. Well said.
And I think if, if you look at the bylaw, you know, that would be an opportunity that, that differentiation between company-run e-scooters and private e-scooters who are able to whip out at the maximum, right? I mean, that, that might be a consideration.
Be a good one, yeah.
If you look at trying to regulate speed on trails, things for private e-scooters as well, that would be a bylaw issue.
There's speed limit for bicycles on trails?
No, I'm just looking for that right now.
Dean doesn't think so either.
No, I'm just looking. I mean, they're monitored under the Highway Traffic Act. You can, if you're blowing down a hill in a fifty kilometer zone and you're doing sixty, you can be
I'm just thinking on red wheel or trail.
On a road, yeah. Yeah, you can be ticketed on a road, but we don't have any
One last question?
One last question. Um, without your software and your data provided, you know, uh, on a regular basis, who's, who's someone calling to complain to? Like, are we going to be getting calls from the public again? Or there's, you know?
So I don't know, maybe what you're up at table, do you want to just maybe, um, talk through what that process looks like when, when you receive a complaint?
Yeah, for sure. So the correct way to file a complaint is directly with the e-scooter company. Um, however, if residents weren't aware of that during the pilot, they would call business licensing and we would inform them to call the company. And then it would be up to the company to address that. If the company didn't address the complaint, then it would come back to us. Then we would directly call the company say, hey, you haven't addressed this complaint, you're reaching that two hour pick up requirement, so you must comply or you could face consequences on your business license.
So it sounds to me like we get called because that
But, but I would add, Monty, that, that, because, because I used it, the, the numbers are listed on the website, St. Albert e-scooter website. I believe, so there's a phone number for all the three companies. I think there was an email address as well that you could just type in and say, hey, there's a scooter there. And their main website was listed, so it is, it is publicly available on the e-scooter website. If somebody, you know, if somebody phoned me and said they had a problem, I would say, hey, go, go there. And you can report it directly to the three companies. And then I personally have the lime and yeah, app on my
Purposes?
On my phone and it was super easy. Take a picture, hit the button, report it. And the, like I said, I farmer's market, blocked it and came back and the scooter was gone.
Good. Yeah.
Oh.
Have you ever ridden one?
Yeah.
They're fun.
Yeah.
Without a helmet, without a helmet.
Okay, um, any more questions and then I'll move, go, go ahead, Mike.
I, I guess, maybe just for clarity, um, if I could sort of bring this up. I mean, based on what we, we heard, uh, the, the option that we put forward as a recommendation for low cost, low admin, low regulation, um, doesn't sound like it was received overly well.
That's fine with it. So is Wes. Yeah.
Okay, so is, okay, so the, the, yeah.
What I, I need just maybe to help you out here, Mike. I need clarification. So I mean, the recommendation is to receive as information and also to move forward with option one. What does moving forward mean for you? Because right now we've tried
You've heard some things you might change in the, in the business license conditions?
Um, yes. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, um, but, but I guess, you know, not, not a lot in the business license conditions, actually. Those would be uh, in, in order, if option one was accepted, absolutely. And then the subsequent component, um, of
Enforce.
visiting the bylaws, I think, um, would, would potentially be a next step on this instance. I think philosophically, right, is, is this good or, or we, we can go with option two and, and but it becomes a service level and we'll have to do a detailed
So I guess is this coming back to council with that or is this intent is because like Counselor Hughes said, businesses want uncertainty and they want to know what's happening. So is the intent would be as of today, you're going to say option one, if this passes, option one is the way we're going to go with limited changes, potential regulations. But then Counselor Hughes is going to be putting forward motions in relation to impacting
Enforcement.
Enforcement and other things that I can only, uh, things we may see. I mean, I'm just looking at the traffic bylaw that specifically identifies forty one point one, which is temporary use of e-scooters. And I mean, even little simple things like, I mean, it's no longer, it ceases to be in effect as of midnight on December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Guess what? We're not there anymore.
So we need to do the travel.
Well, yeah, like, I mean, so I mean, eleven fifty nine, fifty nine P M on December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Temporary e-scooters are no longer covered in our, in our traffic bill. So yeah, so we need to, we need to rectify that.
But that, you could still, yeah, e-scooters go without
Yeah, and that's why
That is a subsequent step.
But I'm just saying is, is I mean, potentially we, we're, we're amending a bylaw that's not, we're amending a section of a bylaw potentially that's no longer in effect.
But I think that, so the one thing that's on the table that's germane specifically to the business licensing component, I think was the number of scooters capes, which, which Council Hughes put down.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other components are bylaws.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
And, yeah, and, and the reporting the pickup, they should be monitoring, shouldn't rely on two hours reported.
Clarification about like
Yeah. Yes. Okay. So you did catch that, right, Sean? Yeah, okay.
But I mean, I guess we got a bigger comment in relation to the bylaw. So I don't know what we need. We, I mean, will Counselor Hughes's intended motion be under the traffic bylaw or do we, I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to have to re-implement it into the traffic bylaw.
Yeah. Sure, that's the step we have to do. Yeah.
Okay.
If you found that, I didn't see that.
Yeah. And, and I, I would make a notice of motion for no helmets and for bringing in a fine, I think Councilor Hughes tweaked me a fine of which is, uh, for riding of two people on there. If, if we got well, right now technically we don't have a bylaw that requires you to wear
Summarize this. We don't have a motion on the floor, but let me see if I can summarize this. If, if the recommended motion goes forward, Sean's going to correct the little piece about who reports and, and putting some onus back on the companies. But we don't even need a motion for that. Uh,
Unrider.
Yeah, and then so uh, and that's it for really amendments today. Sheena's putting forward a motion to query about either the total number company or told in St. Albert for questions for post in the future because we could waive notice. And then we still need, um, I don't know if we need a motion to amend the traffic bylaw because we need to reintroduce what is expired.
Yeah.
And then Mike.
Well, yeah, we would need a motion. I mean, I think it would just be included in his new
But Mike wants to make a motion about the helmets.
But, but
And I think the traffic bylaw would also cover the two riders, not
Yeah.
This. Right. Okay. So I see three things here. There's no motion yet. I'm just assuming the recommendation, recommend
But, but, but I think I would recommend that you allow us to have a go at, at crafting that section of the of the traffic bylaw specific to e-scooters.
Okay.
Um, that, you know, if we came in and said fifteen, then the motion could change it to twenty or the bay could change it to twenty, but we, we've heard, we've heard today and, and that
Yeah, so you're gonna, you're gonna bring the traffic bylaw back to us pretty quick. And at that time you make a motion to take away the helmets.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I mean,
I hope I've got this. I don't have a motion. Does anyone? Oh, Counselor Jolly, you've joined us. Do you have any questions on this?
No, I think, uh, that report was, uh, comprehensive.
All right. Are you willing to bring forward a motion? Because no one else is.
Well, I think
I, I would bring forward the recommendation that's right in the package.
Okay, and you kind of heard what we, uh, we're going to just get some clarification in the business license conditions on who putting some onus back Putting some onus back on the company to clear off their bikes if they're left in the wrong spot for too long. Not just.
Is that, do you want that added to this motion?
I don't think we needed, I'm seeing it, it was, yeah, it was the intention, it just wasn't leading as well as we liked. And then there's going to be a motion potentially from Counselor Hughes on. How we can enforce the companies to comply with these regulations and um also maybe limiting the number in St. Albert, but that's coming. The next week or two, and then we're also bringing back traffic bylaw and at that time Counselor Killig may or may not put a motion forward. To remove the requirement for helmets, so that's where we're at.
And fine for two riders.
And fine for two riders, and Wes wants to go forty kilometers an hour. So, okay, I'm I'm accepting. I'm accepting Counselor Jolly's motion and I'm opening it up for debate, so go ahead, Counselor Jolly.
Yeah, you know what, I just want to thank you to administration for the comprehensive report, I love the heat maps and those kind of things, I think that data was really interesting. As someone who. Is not the biggest fan of e scooters, um, you know, I I've really been impressed with the data showing that. This is something that residents are really excited about, um, and uh, you know, I look forward to seeing people. Riding around downtown especially, um, come summertime, that's all I have, thank you.
Awesome, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, I actually drafted up the the motion there, so I can do it after this vote. Um, and so I appreciate the fact that the majority of the changes we made during the pilot are being tapped. I think that's necessary, um, just to ensure that this is a positive program longer term. But and I'm hoping with the additional limitations that were not included, that we find a way to to make it happen so that it's actually still cost affordable. So I will read this in when we're finished, um, the other thing is, I just, this. I still think this has to come forward for an actual bylaw approval as Counselor, I think it's Coach McKay said it might have been, sorry, it might have been Mike. But um, because it has expired and so we actually don't have a bylaw on the books. And so we can't just say do it and we don't have bylaw, so I'm hoping that when this does come back right away, it comes with the bylaw because right now. We actually don't have approval and just saying go ahead isn't a bylaw, so because this was not brought forward for extension before it expired. I think we actually have to re-approve it, so those uh, that's how I would interpret it whenever we've had a bylaw. So I I'm looking forward to seeing that come forward and. Yeah, I don't want to make this an onerous situation, but we do want to make sure that the people who are using it and the people who don't use it. Are both being respected and and can appreciate it being there and it also safe. So um, that's where I'm going to be performing that that motion and I'm hoping that we can also do with notice motion. If it's possible, I just want to make sure the background is still be able to be completed in the next couple of weeks, that's it, thank you.
Uh, on this motion today, uh, there's too much information that's missing for me to uh vote in favor of this motion as it sits right now. So I'd I'd like to see it by.
I can do it, thanks, Susan. Do you have some, no, I just have a couple of comments, um, yeah, thanks, I mean, I mean, obviously, I'm a a big supporter in relation to open. Um, a market and limited regulations and when we're talking about a lot of businesses, but I mean, there also is a realization that there has to be. Some regulation around it, otherwise we're going to be right back where we were, particularly around e scooters, we're going to be right back to potentially where we were when we. Had the pilot project, so like Counselor Hughes has identified, I'm actually happy that majority of the. Tweaks, if I can use that word, uh, that came in the second phase of the pilot project, have actually kept and are. And and will be moving forward, so I'm more comfortable in relation to um moving that forward. Uh, as you can tell, there's there are going to be some, there's still going to be some massaging in relation to it, whether it's going to be what in the regulations. And or uh, we eventually, when we actually put it back into the traffic bylaw, so that's yet to come, so we're we're going to be able to allow some changes. But I mean, overall, like Counselor Jolly's identified, the report was significant, the reports identified a number of good recommendations around how. By the use and how widely accepted they are by our community, um, the fact that they didn't really have any operational impacts. On our staff and and even I know there was some inconvenience in relation to. Uh, some businesses around that, but I mean, Counselor. Philix identified how um easy it is, I mean, I know some people are reluctant around that and would rather. Default to administration first, maybe taking some of the onus on themselves, but I think that will come with time, but I mean. I just, I just. Just keep going back to the popularity and the use and the actual interesting thing that the fact that, you know, we we pride ourselves on our river and our river valley. And and this is just another uh shared transportation option, I know there is some conflict, but potentially that can be mitigated and. The fact that it's used, the one that really kind of interested me was the high use during the rodeo, so when you talk corrals, I didn't think. So, I mean, uh, I mean, I think that's uh a fantastic opportunity, so. But I do look forward to the potential uh uh changes in the regulations that will tighten it up a little bit, that will mitigate some of the issues. And also some of the motions that are going to be coming back because I I probably will have some suggestions as well based on some of my. My uh experience.
All right, I see no more hands up, I'll add, I will support this motion, I I laugh, pilot project is like. It's synonymous with municipal government right now, like everything is a pilot and. Ten's favorite phrase unintended consequences, um, I think we've done everything we can to eliminate unintended consequences. Such a long pilot with tweaks in the middle. To intense um. And thorough report, like I think we've really looked at everything that we possibly could and a good debate here, so I am supportive, I'll throw it over to you, Counselor Jolly.
Nothing to close, thank you.
All right, call for the vote?
Yes.
So I've got Counselor Bermansky opposed and. I need to, okay, Natalie's in favor. Still waiting for Sheena and Wes.
Well, I'm in favor, I just uh doesn't want to punch through here for me.
Okay, so that that passes uh by majority with six, four and one against.
Can I make a final comment?
Okay.
Can can we allow, can we allow e scooters at Home Depot so I can see Counselor Killig carrying. Carrying fire gray drywall on his.
I'm gonna call for a break, I want you to read in your motion before we break.
Yeah, thank you for that, that the appropriate bylaws, business license requirements and or policies are amended and brought forward for council's approval. To limit the overall number of e scooters approved each year and includes potential fines and other consequences for non-compliance. Such as for not picking up scooters in time following complaints, that does not require additional staffing to maintain the program and that any additional costs are covered through fees. I'd like this brought forward for notice motion people fourth meeting and waive the twenty one day notice motion requirement.
Awesome.
And also, as a just aside, it would be really great if we have any other changes that are recommended to the scooter program to come forward in December or January. Every year instead of March because it does now put this time constraint on it that would be unnecessary if we just did it a few weeks, a few months earlier.
So, yeah, I'll I'll tell you, the report was ready a long time ago, it was on the agenda and but there was some debate on which option they were going to present as a recommendation, so, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, well, but now we are, now we're under the gun trying to figure out how to do this and if it wasn't, it would have been easier.
Okay, it's twelve oh six, um, the. Sandwiches are here, so let's take a twenty or thirty minute break. Oh, forty, how about that?
That is not me.
That's Sean.
We are on to agenda item five point three, which is civic granting delegation of authorities. And I'm Anna Liston and Anna sitting here.
I am. Good, thank you. So today I'm here again to talk about civic granting. And I do have, yes, PowerPoint presentation. Let's wait for Shonda. Good, good to go. Okay, through two thousand twenty one and twenty twenty two administration embarked on a corporate wide grant review to examine the grant funding offered by the city St. Albert to residents, community organizations and businesses. The intent was to identify opportunities for efficiencies and processes, oversight and programs offered. Contributing to the back obtained throughout the project included a council survey, discussion with the impacted committees of council, discussion workshops with city staff through the completion of state of reports for each current grant program, the review of the Ernst Young report, comparison with the number of Alberta municipalities and a council workshop which assisted in identifying the final governance principles for the formation of an overarching policy. Next slide. In May twenty twenty two, council approved policy CCC two, three civic granting. This overarching policy establishes high level principles under which funding programs and opportunities will be offered and outlines the rules for both council administration within the overall granting process. This policy will come into effect September first, twenty twenty three. Simultaneously, a number of current policies governing programs which fall under the new policy will be rescinded. Key points within this policy. Council approves a single civic granting budget. The CAO can establish grant programs which include adding or removing programs. There's annual reporting by the CAO to council on grant programs and council has the authority to delegate funding allocations. One important component of the policy left unfinished at the time of council approval, which was back in May, was the delegation of authority. Also was advised at the time that we would return prior to September twenty twenty three as we required additional time to develop the most effective scenario. Currently, the policy states that council may delegate as appropriate the review of applications within and funding allocations under specific civic grant programs. We're here today to propose a framework for the delegation of authority in which final approval of individual grant requests will be divided within three levels. The three levels were developed based on maximum funding available through a grant program, historical appeals from applicants to recommendations made to council, complexity of projects and reporting required and the expertise required to review the applications. In utilizing levels, we're attempting to take a broader approach which should allow for any future program adjustments, which may be as simple as a slight amendment to a description of a name of a program. So looking at the the levels of delegation, level one delegation, we're calling that overarching community initiative grants. These are low value, low risk, one time funding for or in support of grassroots or citizen led initiatives. Currently, we feel the council sponsorship program would fit under that and the beautification grant. Level two, level two delegation is the community spirit grabs. This is breathing life into St. Albert through celebrations, experiences, programs or services. So currently, in that category of delegation would be community events, environmental initiatives and the LG young artists legacy grant. Though a three delegation, we refer to as community investment grants. These are investing in organizations that build and sustain St. Albert. And currently that would include community capital grant and the outside agencies operating grant. So next slide. So this chart just gives more of a look at where the responsibilities lies and application would move through the process towards approval. So under level one community initiatives, the review and recommendations would be from the administration with the allocation approval would or still be administration, but would be the CAO or the delegate. Level two community spirit and again, that would be say environmental initiatives, for example. Review would be by the committee of council, recommendations through the committee council and the allocation approval would be committee of council. So that's where that would stop and the group would be advised is what their final allocation award was. With the level three community investment, committee of council would be reviewing community council recommendation and then the allocation approval would come through to council. And that is currently is what happens with the two programs we feel currently fit in there, the outside agency operating grant and the community capital grant. Some consideration and benefits allocations at different points allows for quicker dispersment of funds in support of community needs. Allocation at different points decreases resources required at a higher level to review applications, making recommendations and improving funding. Council will retain the responsibility for allocation within those grant programs which have historically been oversubscribed and are met with appeals from the applicants. These programs typically deal with the more substantial funding requests. Committees of council will continue to provide subject matter expertise through the review and approval process of assigned grant programs. All grant approvals will continue to be communicated to council in a timely manner through the minutes of the committee of council and through the monthly individual council reports provided verbally during council meetings. And council will receive at minimum an annual update of all grant allocations and outcomes of granting through the CAO annual report. There will be a few housekeeping tasks required in the event Scout is supportive and would like us to prepare the documents to return first to Scout and then if supported to council. First will be to update policy CCC two, three civic granting, which will include the addition of the delegation framework and update the CAO responsibilities to include the assignment of grant programs to a delegation level and the assignment to grant programs, the committees of council. And next slide. The second key task will include amendments to a number of bylaws. The intent is to prepare and provide these as one omnibus motion. Amendments within the CSAC, EAC and ADAC will include consistent language for adding in the delegation for the committees to review and approve level two grants and within the CAO bylaw, the authority to approve level one grants. We would like to bring the amendments to the bylaws listed back initially to scout the same time as we bring forward the amendments to policy CCC two, three. And with that, I take any questions?
All right. I'm opening it up, guys. Or we go straight to the motion. Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. So Anna, thank you for that. I was quite concerned this came forward and it seems to be softened from what it was initially, at least my impressions of what it was many months ago. So you have examples here of what it is. I guess I can see the examples. Are those all of them that are being affected by this or are there other? Because it says we'll include, but is that, is this an all inclusive list of which providing in the background or there are some that are not mentioned?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Hughes. These are the current grant programs that will be included under this overarching policy. So these are the ones right now that have been identified and are included. There were a few other programs the policy indicates like FCSs program funding, those are outside of this policy. So this is it right now.
Okay, so beyond the SCS programming, what other grants are there that are not mentioned here? I just cannot remember anything right now about which ones are not there.
The municipal historic, the municipal historic resource.
Okay, and that's it, right?
I don't think of the name of it. It's in my policy.
It's okay. Um, the other thing was the council sponsorship is level one. So is that just referencing like the the amount of money that we can spend without getting council approval? Because if it's over a thousand dollars, it goes for council approval, right? So with that, just because it requires council approval, you're going to go pass that money for your own policy. So is this just like the two hundred and fifty dollars? Like that's kind of what we're doing right now. I think is it just becomes a de facto and the CEO does do that, I'm guessing. Is that?
That is correct, although that is one we haven't finalized where those grant programs will lie. That was the one, the one grant program that we have gone back and forth a little bit on because when the higher amounts, it does currently come back to council as you've stated. Um, we have considered moving that to level three, although then every two hundred and fifty dollars, we wouldn't want to have to come to council. So couple of options, if we split that program itself up into kind of two categories, we could do that.
Yeah, I think that would probably be your easiest solution because I don't think that we need to beat micromanaging the two hundred dollars, but I do think that you know, our budget, I think is ten thousand for the council level and you don't want one person just saying here's eight thousand dollars just on their own without actually having council agree to them allocate those funds that way. So I think splitting it would probably work. That's a good idea. And then the other one you had was the Camille areas, kind of what the hell, beautification thing? Yeah. Commercial, I had just my handwriting, commercial area beautification grant. So that one again, also I've never seen it come before council. So that pretty much is kind of what's happening. We're just formalizing it. Is that correct?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay. And then, but the change will be, I think, the level two, which is the community events grants, environmental and the young artists did come before to council, right? So that's to me, when I say that's the big change is level two.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Okay, and as for those three, so my other question, like it's sort of like, I think that I don't remember council ever really disagreeing with anything per se on that, but I think it might have happened maybe a couple of times. It's hard to remember. So when I, when I look at this, it's how much faster would they get the funds than coming to council and having approval? Because that's the main onus is just that won't have to come and have that extra delay. Is, has anybody said that they've had an issue with having to wait an extra week for the approval or what is the rationale for having to worry about a delay when they typically get asked for it pretty far enough down?
Oh, sorry.
I'm a bad email, but sculpture.
Uh, there is a bit of a, the delay is one issue. Um, there's also the, the work and the, the staff involvement that goes through and bringing it to council. There is the one grant program that it does actually impact a fair amount and that is the environmental initiatives. Currently, if we move to this, currently they're doing the recommendations and it actually isn't coming to council until January. So you're always approving on the previous year amount. Um, but the new framework, uh, it would go to the AC and then the group would find out a week later rather than two or three months later. That would be the greatest impact would be for that group.
So why is there a delay between the approval from the committee then and coming before council? Why couldn't we just bump up the date and do it in November?
I, I just believe that is the system they have been using. When I did speak to the folks from that, they were uh, have been quite encouraged that they would be able to, to award it so much sooner. And I'm not sure if it's with timing with budget and whatnot, when they're able to get on the council agenda.
I would add to that. If I could counsel you just that the, the timeframe is only one of the considerations in coming up with the delegations of authorities. So it wasn't necessarily the driving factor in, in that as well.
So what was the other factor besides the time? And it was the staff preparation um, to get it together and then what else?
So we did look at, again, at the time for a decision on the grants, we looked at staff time in terms of supporting and preparing reports. Uh, we considered the time invested by committees of council in terms of the recommendation process and authorities. And then we also listened to what we heard from council in terms of um, providing them with decision points that kind of reflect more, more broadly, I guess, uh, where they, they thought the value lied and helping to make some of those granting decisions.
Okay, so the next question I have is let's say that because we don't find out about what the grants have been allocated. Is it going to be on an annual basis or after the fact, like fairly as a memo or something after the fact? What is the intention on communication?
So if you're talking about those level two grants, you would find out people receive the minutes from the committee. So you would receive those minutes. Uh, I would believe usually the week or two weeks after the meeting. And council always looks at those minutes and steps them.
Okay, so are we trying to put them, I'm trying to remember. I don't think we have them as agenda items anymore, do we, Anna? Um, before with committee for the committee for approval and then it could be for council for approval of the minutes. Are we still doing that? I'm just.
But it's not coming to committee of the whole.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Council, right? Correct? Uh, when we approve them at council, for sure, yeah.
Okay, so we are still seeing them at the council level. I'm just trying to remember everything. So I'm getting a little, my brain's a little fuzzy today. Um. Okay, so what we're looking at, because the thing I'm also asking is let's say the committee recommends a certain number and then I don't tend to disagree with their numbers, but let's just say that they recommend a certain number or they didn't recommend environmental initiatives grant and some member of council disagreed that decision and wanted to increase it or simply add them. Would the council still have the prerogative then to say we want to add it because it's not being brought before council for discussion? Or they said it's not even your purview to be able to do that?
Council has the prerogative to do whatever they want to such if you want to make.
No, I just want to make sure. We can write out all of our own rights. That's why I want to see what's going on.
You would just do a notice of motion to amend the decision. Yeah.
Okay, so we're still allowing that, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Anna, thanks for this little, uh, sentence here. It says in alignment with CEO responsibilities to add or remove grant programs. The CEOs would also be responsible for assigning grant programs to a delegation level. Can you just explain how in practice that works? Like how is fully trust our current CAO, but if you were to say you know what, we really don't have the money this year for the, uh, you know. a level three program here, the uh, and we're not going to do that this year. I I mean, the way I read that, he would have every right to do that.
I I guess it's
Sure, I can I can uh, try and respond to that, Counselor Broadhead. So uh, under, under the the policy that council uh, endorsed back in May, which comes into effect this September, that the C A O currently has the authority to add and delete programs. Uh, we talked about it at that time that that uh, as always, council has the opportunity to direct the C A O to to make or or not make certain program changes. Uh, we also trust in uh, an open and transparent dialogue between council and administration in making those decisions. So the the mechanism is there for the C A O to add or delete a particular program, the likelihood that that would happen in isolation of uh, the kind of broader conversations, I think, is uh, I I guess the the nub of this one.
And I think if I could, specific to adding a program, I I I guess I could make up a new program, but I can't resource it to finance it. Those decisions are made by council ultimately, right? In terms of of new money, if we allocate new money to something from from a purely financial perspective.
Well, there's practical application and then there's a letter of the law. I just just wondered, uh, is is that covered off somewhere else? I I didn't see it. Maybe I've mistaken, so.
So Counselor Broadhead to that, specifically the the program piece uh, was part of the it this uh, the council policy that that has been endorseable and come into effect in September of of this year. Uh, when it comes to the delegation of authorities, what we proposed really is a is a framework uh, for for delegating or assigning delegations of authority and then turning that responsibility over to the C A O. Uh, so that if if a new program was to to come in, uh, the the C A O would have some parameters in terms of aligning with a delegation of authority as outlined in the and if it was adopted as updated in the 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 granting policy.
All right. I will, we'll see how it plays out in practice. I I suspect there won't be a problem to be sure. It's just that when uh, when you want some to be written in there and it's not, uh, sometimes it reaches back to bite you, but that's okay. That was my only question, actually, Madam Mayor.
All right. I see no more questions from the room. So, oh, Counselor Hughes, you have another question? Or is your hand still up?
Yeah, this is no, I get another one, sorry. Um, just as a follow up to Counselor Broadhead, you spurred on, I have that question and I missed it. So thank you for catching that with us. The question I had is, so I know you said that there's you could create a new program. But then could you not just simply reallocate the funds since we're just approving one broad amount of budget um, to create the funds by removing it from a different family? Reduced the environmental budget from whatever, let's say it was thirty thousand to twenty and then saying that twenty thousand is not going to a new grant. What what is this? Did we previously approve that allowed to be happening?
Um, so in respect to adding and removing programs, we do have a a team of representatives from the various departments that are the the team leads on those. So I would expect it would be uh, we would need a very sincere argument to add or delete. We have developed or in the process of developing our operating protocols of how we would add or delete and we would need rationale and presentation to the C A O in order to do so. If we um, the thought is if we wanted to add a program, that would have to come forward as a business case to council uh, with asking to increase the uh, funding envelope. So council really in essence would then be approving a new program as we would be probably adding. Um, in order to uh, delete a program, um, I would say my sense is that uh, within the different department leads, there has been certainly some ideas. We are involving the committees of council as well in our discussions, but it would be more of massaging a current program to to potentially better meet the needs within that parameters of that program itself. So, you know, again, I can't foresee the future, but I I I think it would be very difficult to just delete a program.
Counselor Hughes, to your question, uh, you, the 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 policy, again, that comes into effect in September would provide the ability to uh, reallocate grant dollars from that granting envelope to uh, programs within there. So it it is uh, possible under that policy that a new program could come on board without actually uh, coming back to council to request additional dollars.
Yeah, so what? So if I understand you correctly, thank you, was that we could, they could be reallocating the funding envelope to create new programs or simply just redistribute the total amount without having any council approval or awareness prior to that happening. Is that correct?
Correct.
That is possible.
Okay. And that that was already approved last year, right? Or is that happening again with this one?
Uh, that was approved back in, uh, I think was May of twenty three, Anna?
No, twenty
Twenty two, thank you. Uh, May of twenty two, but it comes into effect September uh, this year.
And so with this amendment, it would be is that where we are only approving the total envelope? Because before or was the total envelope approval happening last May?
That's been approved already. This uh, this presentation here is really focusing on the delegation of authority around the reviewing and allocation of uh, dollars within a grant program.
And so one more question, the policies, because you said you were talking about, you know, removal and massaging. Are the policies related to these now also not going to come under council's review?
Uh, the policies of the programs that are in within this overarching policy, no, they will not be coming back to council for review. They are uh, now becoming administrative directives.
Let's see, so you'll talk to the committees and then administration will just make the changes. Um, and then is because right at this point, council has a say in the policies, correct?
Correct.
And that will be removed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Uh, I just leaned over and asked Counselor Promaski if she's willing to make the motion and she said she was, so I'll let her go ahead.
That administration be directed to bring forward specific amendments to policy C C C twenty three civic granting and consequential amendments to bylaws and related government governance documents to incorporate the proposed delegation of authority framework and updates to C A O responsibilities as outlined in this report for consideration by standing committee of the whole in Q two, twenty twenty three.
Awesome. Great. I'll accept that in the opening comments.
Uh, the comments I have is just in working with, you know, the granting committees and whatever, I mean, administration completed a a a large part of the work and do a great job on it. Um, you know, they they I I've seen nothing but good success in working with administration on it, so I'm I'm in favor of this.
Counselor Jolly, did your hand go up and then go down?
You know, I I just want to briefly say, you know, it it feels like we're growing up a little bit. Um, to to delegate, to delegate these kind of things to administration. It it's just showing that um, we're we're the kind of community that knows that we're going to be investing in our community and and that we can give that to the people that we we look to for advice and um, I'm excited about this change.
Awesome. Counselor Hughes.
Yeah, I'm not going to be supporting this motion. I I don't really see that this is a problem that needs to be solved. It typically goes to the committee. It comes for council approval. Nine times in the time, there's no issues. Uh, but we are have full awareness and we agree with the decisions and we're allocating budget decisions now and taking it out of budget purview. And with the removal of even having any input into the policies, we are not only, we're not, now we're not deciding. I'm only looking at level two because level one is status quo and level three status quo. Level two, we're taking away, however, in the policies taking away everything, it looks like. We're taking away the ability to change the policies if we need to. We're taking away the ability to make decisions about the finances. And we're taking with budget decisions away from, again, away from council. And I don't know how this is necessary. And I look at the environmental initiatives grant, there's no reason why it cannot be done sooner than three months after the decision is being made by committee. It could simply be slotted in at the end of October and or beginning of November and be done. So I guess I just ask council to think like, what problem are we actually solving here? Because I I don't see this as a problem with the level two community grants and environmental initiatives or young artists to come forward. And I don't think council meetings are so bombarded that we couldn't afford to have this just be approved uh, when it comes for for council for a proper discussion, but at least make sure that we were still in the policymaking procedures. This is it. I I I just, I don't have the necessity to remove it. If we're going to remove the ability for council to make decisions, we should be able to justify why we absolutely should not be making those decisions on our own behalf. Especially when it comes to budget. And um, and this is a budget item. And in some cases, community advances for tens of thousands of dollars in total amounts, if not more. And I just think that if we're doing that, we should actually make sure that we have the say. I was not comfortable with the last decision of delegating it all out. The reallocation of finances can occur without council approval and now policies will be changing without council approval and decisions we made though council approval. And just ask yourselves, is this actually necessary? Because I don't see it as. That's it. Thank you.
You have something to say?
Yeah, and well, I just, I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I can respond to some of the last points and know that. I mean, council ultimately has all of the accountability and all of the authority. I mean, if we see a policy or a process uh, or even a program as we have on the next item on the agenda, we have the ultimate authority to um, uh, make changes and even looking at the accountability, uh, the C A O, I'm just reading directly off the bylaw that deals with C A O accountability. Section five, one, C A O shall be accountable to council for the exercise of all powers, duties and functions delegated to the C A O by the act, this bylaw, any other enactment, any other bylaw and any other resolutions, policies or procedures adopted by council from time to time, whether such powers, duties and functions are exercised by the C A O personally or by someone to whom the C A O has delegated that power as a hidden function. Um, we're a big organization as I've been uh, and we have lots of decisions and I know that uh, some of these decisions uh, come directly to council and I think the major ones with this new policy changes were are are not impacted by that. What this does is this just aligns um, authority and responsibility at the proper level of accountability. So uh, I'm I'm going to support this and ultimately again, I can, we can always fall back to bringing a matter, an issue, uh, a grievance to council and dealing with it at that time.
All right, I see no more comments. I'll let Counselor Promaski close.
Okay, um, good comments by Counselor Hughes, but in this particular situation, I think it's time we give it a try and and like I say, we always have recourse in the future and uh, I'm confident this will work.
All right, call for the vote. And I'm looking. So Natalie's in favor. Still don't see a vote, Counselor Hughes or Counselor Broadhead? I haven't seen that one. Okay.
It's opposed.
And still opposed.
Oh. I sent it to you, Madam Mayor, instead of to everyone.
Direct to me, okay. The Counselor Broadhead is in favor. All right, so that one passes by majority. Okay, uh, we are on to service levels and we have Don Fedorovich here.
We've been waiting all day.
No way.
A battery doesn't last very long.
I may come in the DMs that we've offered a reward for the return of the bronze statue.
Yeah. Think so.
Let's not bore another.
It's afraid it's already been melted down. Oh, sorry. Yeah, we're just letting come back. We're sad about the statue right now, so we're kind of lamenting.
Yeah. I want to offer a reward.
I think all you're going to get is melted bronze. Okay.
It's probably already melted.
Thank you for having me here today to chat about the service and service level inventory update, the annual upper. Um, so as you're aware, we have our strategic planning framework that um, aligns our city's planning, our budgeting as well as our reporting practices all to the community divisions and to council strategic plan. So the service and service level inventory falls into actioning parts of the strategic framework um, as it describes our program and service delivery. Every year, over eighty percent of our budget goes towards um, maintaining our current levels of service. So it's the day to day service delivery. So how do we keep track of that and how do we communicate what those services are? For us, it's through the service and service level inventory. Uh, it's embedded in various policies, but for the main part, it's used as our base to develop the base budget annually. So the base budget is what is required to deliver the services and service levels in this document that you will approve hopefully approved today. Um, so annually we come, we we try to keep track of any changes that council has made throughout the previous year uh, through motions that would affect services. So in twenty twenty two, there were three motions that council made that affect services. Um, in May, we just finished talking about this, but on on May sixteenth, um, you approved to the policy C dash C C dash twenty three civic granting, which amalgamates some of the previous granting programs that were listed individually in the service level inventory. So the community capital grant program, community events grant, environmental initiatives grant, lieutenant governor distinguished young artist legacy program, those have all been removed from the service level inventory. And then business retention and expansion made mention of the beautification cost share program. So that's been updated. On October twen- October seventeenth, um, the economic sustainability advisory board was disbanded by council. So that's just been updated in um, stakeholder relations service level. And then during budget, um, a motion was passed to change the service level for level two C parks. Um, so it was maintenance of um, lawn maintenance. So we made that update again. Um, so last year, if you remember, in twenty twenty two, we did a really big change to the inventory. Um, there was a big amalgamation to better align it for P V B, uh, priority based business planning and budgeting. And so during that update, we did notice since we've been using it this past year that there were a few services that got missed. So we've just uh, re reintroduced those into the inventory. We never stopped doing them. It was just that they were missed in the inventory. So those are the ones listed under cultural amenities, cultural programming, individual and family supports, individual and family support services and tree planting and so how do changes get made to the services and service levels? Um, we just wanted to spend a couple of minutes on this, um, because all of the services in the external service level inventory are approved by council. So that means that any changes also have to be approved by council through a public motion. Ideally, um, this can happen throughout the year. Uh, it doesn't have to happen or it shouldn't always happen as part of the budget process. But council or administration can suggest a change through a motion and then bring forth, we would bring forth an agenda report outlining an analysis of the change impacts so that you would really understand both the financial and social impacts changing that service. Council would make the decision and if it passes, the change becomes immediate, you know, based on what the motion was, though the update of the inventory just happens once a year. If council would like to make any changes uh, to services or service levels, um, they can be passed again, moving forward anytime in twenty twenty three through council motions. And like I mentioned, um, it allows for administration to uh, provide you the the information you need to to make the best decision. And as we move into the budget season, um, as I mentioned, eighty percent of our budget goes towards maintaining our services. So council's direction today on um, the service and service level inventory will confirm um, that we will continue to build our budget towards providing the services outlined in here. Also, your council strategic plan, of course, outlines changes over time and these often would require um, investment. And council also makes other decisions throughout the year that may have uh, financial impact. And so all of that gets built uh, financial impact. And so all of that gets built into our budget process. So today, by approving this updated service and service level inventory, you're providing direction for administration to move forward as we build the two thousand and twenty-four budget to be, uh, based on maintaining these services and services. And then I just have the recommendation, um, that Standing Committee of the Whole. Sorry?
I think that was Council Hughes. You're not muted, Gina.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Um, so our recommend, we were, we're asking that Standing Committee of the Whole recommends to council that the updated service and service level inventory, uh, provided as an attachment be approved. And then that this updated version, uh, replaces the current version in our policy C F S oh five, Budget and Taxation Guiding Principles, Schedule One, and that the budget is built to maintain these services and service levels. I can open it up to any questions that you might have.
Excellent.
My question is not with any of the programs or service levels, because we know what happens when we accidentally tweak one. Um. The, uh, the, the question I would have, though, is if we would like to make any service to service level changes, and because of the impact to the budget, they need to be done by the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year, but is there a timeframe in relation to that, like a specific date that you would want the changes to? If we look through this, and all of a sudden some glaring just caught us. When would be the date that we would have to have it done by to get it into the next budget?
We'll be kicking off the two thousand and twenty-four budget season on May third or, or fourth. So if we could have any changes in time to provide that analysis, recognizing that, you know, administration may not have time if the change is big, to provide the the proper analysis in the next month. Um, and also if we did provide some information, the budget might not be affected in twenty-four, it might be affected in twenty-five.
Yeah, I was just like, when I was reading this, there was that one line that I, I referred to, but there was no specific deadline date then.
Just decided.
Yeah, okay, good. That's all my questions, ma'am.
All right, Council Killick.
That's my favorite subject and favorite subject of residents, trees. Um, so on page one thirty-nine, I, I appreciate that this was put back in, uh, to the service level. Um, it when I had issued the I R a year ago, um, it came back as the answer, current program standard is any tree removed will be replaced in year they are lost. In, in the, uh, service levels, it talks about public vegetation. It, it kind of is a unusual term when we're what I was trying to get at is we, I don't think a resident phones in and says the public vegetation and you know, is, has died in front of my house. They would think of public vegetation as you know, the shrubs along St. Albert Trail or around a stormwater pond or some, something like that. But on, on one hand, we have very specific guidelines around something I'm painfully aware of, which was grass cutting on, you know, X number of days, a particular boulevard will be cut. But this seems a very still as a service level very broad in its language that I would have a hard time explaining to a resident that says don't worry, your public vegetation slash tree will be replaced within the year it dies. Was this the wording that was previously in there and we just copied and pasted it the second time around and it, it doesn't seem to kind of line up with the wording that I had asked for in my uh, I R back a year ago. So is there a way to tighten that up or?
Have a suggestion?
Well, I, I would just see.
True would be too.
If, um, if Louise or Jay are on.
Or not, I just expect.
Um, we can definitely take that back and see if that's a term that's used in the industry, because sometimes that's the case. Um, you know, we the, the services are aligned to, to the services that they provide. Um, but if there's an opportunity to speak the language to make it more, uh, user friendly, then we can make that.
Yet the public's not reading us, right?
No, but
they're calling it the dead tree or dead bush or whatever, right?
There, yeah, the, the high level wording of the highest level of that service level is tree planting.
Okay.
And then it goes all mushy and turns into public vegetation. Starts off with trees, but it
Yeah.
it, and it would be really nice to be able to see, because I, I certainly hear a lot of of feedback, uh, out from residents that say they've reported that tree three years in a row. When is it going to be replaced? And, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate that Louise and team have done an awesome job catching up for the two years of COVID when we didn't do tree planting, so kudos to the team. I don't want that message to get lost, but I'd like to see it very clear. Like I said, grass cutting, we have a very clear five days it'll be cut. Then here we kind of go very uh, vague, I guess, is the way I would, I would put it. So I, I was hoping to see it pop in. It is great. I was hoping to see it more specific to say clearly, you know, any, any boulevard tree would be replaced within the year. And I had even in my original I R proposed a tree in a park could take a longer period of time, two years to, to give some flexibility, but also to give priority to all of those, you know, any dead tree that gets knocked down in the winter by a car or or, you know, just dies, right? So.
I could definitely take that back.
Kind of tell I'm a little bit passionate about trees, but.
Okay, so you'll just take it back and see.
And see if the language needs to change, to change, if we can make a quick, like, I, like I said, it's not my service also.
Yeah.
I, I can't say for sure that, um, we can change the language, but if we can, and if it's more user friendly, then
Yeah.
we can make that up.
Okay, thank you. And I, I would reference back to the I R that was about a year ago. I think it was, I have it in front of me. It was I R twenty-two dash eighteen. Oh, just for reference.
Twenty.
Council Vermette. Thank you. I have three questions on, on page eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine. It's Parks Bylaw nineteen slash six five. Would that be the new Parks Bylaw listed in there rather than that one? There's a new number for the Parks Bylaw.
Um, we will update that then, yes. Schools that, um, that that is.
Several pages.
Okay.
And then, um, I was curious about, um, the five point two low income subsidy. How is that decided?
I would have to, um, reach out maybe to Elizabeth if she's able to.
You're.
Um, we have different programs for like transit as well as recreation users.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that it's captured through there, but how.
Generally provincial.
It's a provincial.
Yes.
Definition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems to service provided through the city, but directed.
But the income testing is done by parameters.
It's a standardized, standardized.
Yes.
Number, I can't remember what our standard point is.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the specific number is now, but you're right. It's standardized as based on uh, provincial indicators as to what's the poverty level would be and what that income tax would be perceived on.
Connie would.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question, I had someone ask me why the pools closed on Easter Monday. It's listed in here that it's actually closed. And it's not a stat holiday, right? Like that. So it's closed probably Easter Sunday because they're all closed Sundays. Why it's listed in here is very.
Why pools are closed on Easter Monday?
Why, why?
The South Park pool, it's listed right in.
They. Okay.
But the ci- city policy right now designates Easter Monday as.
Even if they're open Sundays.
Yeah, whatever dates are listed in the, um, in the service level inventory at the back, those are the dates that our council policy dictates.
Okay, it was just a funny thing to see.
Do you want to follow, a follow-up on that? Okay, perfect.
Council Hughes.
Thank you. I have a quick feedback. It would really be helpful for next year, since we see this every, uh, year, Don, is if, if just in the background or, or in a summary attachment, if we just had a summary of like what was added and not added for those items. Normally there aren't that many. I know this year seems to have a few more, but because you go to Culture Mendez and there's six things there, but I don't know specifically what was changed. So if you go back and can, Rick, um, look at last year's document. So if you could just have like a summary of what actually was changed in those dot, in those going forward, that would just be helpful for us to kind of get a an easier way to digest the information. So that was all.
We can't provide, um, a redline version, uh, because we use a program that's not Word to create the inventory, but we do try to show the rationale of changes in the change summary report. Um, so if you needed more detail, then we could take that back. Like, um, we just try to keep that, um, if it was, you know, council motion, such and such. Um, I'm just trying to find when, so you know, we combined one point two B and one point two D. Um, so we did try to provide that, but if you're looking, we can try to provide more information if, if that's.
Yeah, just like a summary sheet that just said like one point one two of Count Mendeys and just put that in a chart. That would just be helpful. Because we're scanning through three hundred pages, right?
That's because it's in, it's in there. So there's a second report called Change Report. Um, summary of changes.
Yep.
And so.
Okay. I know.
Page one thirty.
At the end of the other one, I didn't look at that.
That's okay.
Okay, sorry for that. Then you know what? Good job.
That's how we work. That's.
So we show the proposed, the previous, and then the rationale for why the change.
That's all you were going to add.
I see it now. I just, I got to the end of the document and then thought I was done for some reason, and then I just hit the next. So I apologize for that. And thank you for pointing out. That's it.
That's good. Go ahead, Council McCott.
Uh, I'll make the recommended motion if there's no other questions.
Other questions?
Uh, the Standing Committee of the Whole recommended council that the updated services and service levels inventory provided as an attachment to the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda report entitled Services and Service Level Inventory Annual Update be approved and be that the approved updated version of the services and service levels inventory replace the version currently attached to the council policy C dash F S dash zero five budget taxation guiding principles, schedule one, services and service level inventories and developments to the twenty twenty-four budget, proposed budget to main, a approved services and service levels. There was a few tweaks with this. It
Um.
Maybe because we're approving that this, this version gets.
Don, did you take a note of some of the?
I'll definitely look into updating the links for the new bylaw.
Right.
Um, and when it comes, before it comes to council, and, um, if we can change the words on vegetation.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that one, but.
Yeah.
This is just recommended to council.
Yeah.
Basically, it can be amended that.
Oh, so I forgot to share one thing about the vegetation. I believe Louise had sent an email, and I don't know if this can ask for a question, but it just says public vegetation means only public trees are vegetation, not private. So get many, we get many calls about shrubs and trees are a subset of public vegetation. So I think it's more than trees and shrubs. It could be grass, like. Get rid of grass.
There should reflect that in the beginning part of the same service level, right?
Yeah. Okay, so we're fine with the way I read it. And then we can change it. Okay, good. All right.
Okay. Anything to add?
No, I, no opening comments either.
Okay. I see no one else with their hand up, so I will call. Favor. It's all unanimous. Okay. All right, moving on to budget analysis. Those, Mr. Dooley? Hi, Trevor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is my screen sharing?
Yes, it is. Yes, perfect.
Perfect. Uh, so yeah, good afternoon. I'm happy to, uh, co-present this report today with, with Ann Victor, Director of Finance and Strategic Services. As noted in the background report, federalism and fiscal tools in Canada require partnership and collaboration across all orders of government to deliver needed and desired services to Canadians. As residents and businesses live and operate in cities, towns and rural communities, municipal governments are in the position of having to directly provide or support most public services and infrastructure. At the same time, municipalities largely rely on property taxes, grants or government transfers and user fees or charges for revenues to deliver these services. While municipalities are responsible for sixty percent of public infrastructure, municipalities receive approximately eight cents of every tax dollar generated by all orders of government. The types of programs and level of financial support from other orders of government varies from budget to budget and can impact municipal sustainability of service and infrastructure provision. So in terms of, uh, key themes, as councils where the government of Alberta tabled their two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-six budget on February twenty-eighth, which is expected to be approved later this month. Budget two thousand and twenty-three projects revenue of seventy point one billion dollars and expenses of sixty eight point three billion with a surplus of two point four, uh, billion dollars. The budget reflects a positive fiscal position overall for the province. Budget two thousand and twenty-three has several key themes strongly aligned with council's strategic priorities that reflect current and potential future partnership and collaboration opportunities. And the city is well positioned to continue to work with the provincial government to enable economic prosperity. These themes present opportunities for council and the city to align the provincial government on shared priorities within each of these areas, notably for initiatives such as the Lakeview Business District, mixed market housing, EMS improvements, provincial municipal revenue sharing and other council advocacy priorities. City council has engaged with the provincial government and advocacy associations on a number of fronts and has seen success this year with the provincial government agreeing to grow the L G F F at a one-to-one ratio, enhance funding envelopes for affordable housing, and the province's sustained commitment to partner with the city to twin Reagan Drive. Moving forward, this means continued collaboration with the government of Alberta to make strategic investments and infrastructure programs that enhance affordable housing supply, promote economic growth and diversification, and maintain and improve Alberta's quality of life. I'll now let Ms. Victor, uh, speak to some of the impacts to the city of San.
Thanks, Trevor. Overall, there was no major surprises to ci- city administration and to the two twenty-three budget. The city has taken a physically responsible approach to help enable provincial growth and support the provincial government's positive financial position by absorbing over five million in annual recurring provincial funding reductions since two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. While this budget increases the M S I L G F F operating component, resulting in net new revenue of approximately four hundred and ninety-two thousand to the city. This does not offset the ongoing annual funding reductions of approximately four point five million the city continues to face. The city relies heavily on this funding to support our existing infrastructure requirements, putting, putting us in a difficult position as grants become less reliable and stable. Realizing the need to move away from this reliance, council has proactively changed policy to include an increase to the property tax budget to support existing infrastructure maintenance. This provides more security in ensuring existing assets can be properly and fully maintained through the existing tax base and that capital grants should be utilized to support growth-related projects. Some specific items to note. So under the M S I L G F F capital, um, there's no real changes in the actual, uh, last final year of that M S I budget is still at four hundred and eighty-five million. Um, a real kudos to our city council for, um, who sponsored the two thousand and twenty-two Alberta municipalities resolution. And that's where they called for the province to increase the baseline funding envelope for the L G F F to grow at that one-to-one ratio Trevor mentioned and link it to provincial government revenue, which this budget commits to doing that. So while the allocation formula for L G F F will be established in the months ahead, initial projections and communications that we've received are forecast, forecasting no change to that twenty-five percent reduction. And as the reductions were communicated by the province over the past three provincial budgets, the city has factored this reduction into its long-term planning. And then in regards to the M S I L G F F operating, this is a component where, um, we've been referencing that there's been a doubling of that overall pot from thirty to sixty million. So the increase is to address rising costs to inflation and other external factors, which include the recent government decisions. For the city of St. Albert, this represents the four hundred and ninety-two thousand coming into new revenue that I just mentioned. And as this increases to support maintaining city services and facilities, the increase will be brought to council in May with the budget adjustments to the approved operating budget. Under the Ray Gibbon Drive and Alberta Capital Plan, Ray Gibbon Drive is identified in the third year in two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six of the province capitals plan with its initial three million for the province's first year of funding. This is consistent with the payment schedule and the cost sharing agreement completed between the city and the Alberta. With its initial three million for the province's first year of funding, this is consistent with the payment schedule and the cost sharing agreement completed between the city and the Alberta Transportation in two nineteen. Under affordable housing, the province aims to support the creation of twenty three hundred new affordable housing units each year for the next three years. The capital plan provides additional funding for affordable housing, including two hundred two million for the Affordable Housing Partnership Program, sixty eight million for the Affordable Housing Strategy, and forty six million for affordable and specialized housing. This presents an opportunity for the Homeland Housing Initiative in downtown St. Albert. So additionally, the city will see the following other impacts. So under education property tax in two thousand twenty three, the estimated total requisition for St. Albert will increase by two percent. The education requisition accounts for approximately twenty five percent of a rate bayers property tax bill. So the city of St. Albert's share of this increase will be determined by the equalized assessment process where municipalities across Alberta are brought to a common assessment value and will be communicated through the property tax rate by law um in May. And then under FCSS funding, the total funding, the province's total funding envelope has increased from five million to hundred and five million. Uh the city has not yet been provided with information how this will be distributed throughout the province, but any amendments will be distributed in April and further communication will follow on those impacts. Um under libraries, library funding was increased by two point nine million to thirty three point four million since being frozen at thirty point five million in two thousand sixteen. Um per communication with the library, this equates to approximately twenty thousand increase to their grant that they receive. Under the Community Facility Enhancement Program, an eleven million per year increases to that program to a total of fifty million per year. This may present some enhanced opportunities for community and nonprofit um organizations, but the city is not eligible itself. And I'm gonna pass it on to Trevor.
Yeah. And so as councils aware, there were several investments in the St. Albert community that were previously announced prior to to the budget. So that includes active communities Alberta, the modernization of Bellrose High School, and a grant provided to the St. Albert BMX Association. As well, the budget includes uh medical device reprocessing at the Sturgeon Hospital. Um as far as EMRB is concerned, um the the EMRB has not seen an increase to their provincial government grants, so it's staying at one million dollars, which means that uh subject to future advocacy efforts of the board, they may have to reduce expenses or look at increasing membership contributions in the future. From a policing perspective, the budget includes three million in this year for grant funding for municipalities and indigenous communities seeking to explore alternative policing models. The province has communicated uh they will provide up to thirty thousand dollars to interested parties to uh to research and explore that concept further. Uh EMS seven hundred and forty million is budgeted for EMS with new funding to address the uh Alberta Emergency Services Provincial Advisory Committee Recommendations. Uh the province plans to spend an additional one hundred and ninety six million over three years with a hundred and forty eight million of that to uh this year for operating EMS with the goal of improving response times. So prior to the creation of budget twenty twenty three, the city engaged with relevant provincial ministries regarding city council priorities. The city remains well positioned to work with the government of Alberta, particularly in the realms of economic prosperity, downtown vibrancy, community wellbeing, and affordable housing and financial sustainability. With a likely provincial election to occur this May, city administration will collaborate with council to engage accordingly with the intent of partnering with the province on items of mutual benefit regardless of election outcomes. And with that, Madam Mayor, that concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Uh just for clarification, and you said went from five million to a hundred and five million for FCSS, but it's a hundred million to a hundred five. They got five million extra. A small bump.
Thanks for clarifying.
Like that would have been a great one, a hundred million dollars. Uh questions? Oh, no questions. Probably because we've uh digested it over the last couple of weeks. So um did you mention in your presentation what administration's plan is for the extra MSI operating money?
Yeah, we're gonna bring that forward with uh the recommendations for the budget adjustments for any amendments to the twenty three budget since December in the beginning of May.
Okay, but your but your recommendation is just to apply it to.
Yeah, it was in. Yeah, it was in line with the recommendations in all the communication to apply it to maintain services and address the downloading.
Perfect. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, you gotta get on the board, Council Killick. Go for a motion.
Yeah. All right.
Yep, the the report dated March fourteenth twenty twenty three entitled Government of Alberta Budget Analysis be received as information.
Awesome. Before I accept that, Council Jolly, how was your meeting with Minister Nixon?
It was great and Mr. Nally as well. Um even though he, I think he was at the ledge until midnight last night uh defending his budget to to committee. Um it was great. Um they were really receptive and certainly um are their stronger foundations um plan is in line with what we want to do in here in St. Albert, so we're we're excited about next steps.
Yeah, that's good. Keep keep the pressure on. All right, I now accept your motion, Council Killick. Go ahead.
Uh pretty straightforward, good news budget uh. Um slight, you know, positive amount of uh extra cash going into reserves back in. So it's good news all around balanced budget. They focus provincially on big these strategic things like uh uh healthcare and education and affordable housing, et cetera. So I think those things will trickle down to us as well and uh meet our our requirements. More would always be better, uh but it's a pretty good plan. Uh and I think our sets us up because we've been planning for the reductions in MSI. On the capital side, we've been planning for that or administration has been planning for that for a couple of years. So we're uh we haven't overspent. Um and I think that strategically puts us in a good position uh to go forward. So overall, a good good plan and good fit to the way it works within St. Albert.
All right, anyone else on the budget? Okay, I meet with Minister Schultz on March twenty seventh to speak allocation, so I will continue to fight for a high weighting for population instead of roads. Because that's where the growth is. Okay, call for the vote. This one's not working, Council.
It's a little information.
I'll be now. Uh strategic plan. Key indicators. Daria, you're back.
Yes, I'm back. Yes, and Nicole should be online. There she is.
We just had to get rid of the Dooley's.
Yeah.
Who's kicking it off?
Okay, I am. So I think we're we're ready. So yes, Nicole and I are here today to uh talk about uh performance measurement and key indicators specifically related to council strategic plan. Uh so we will provide a brief background, talks a little bit about uh performance measures, practice, and then cities approach. And then um share some information with council related to path forward for your input and direction. So brief background, I think the council is familiar with our strategic framework, but one of the elements under measuring. Pretty simple. Oh. Nicole. She's running. Probably just late. Um. There you go. Okay. Uh so one of the uh elements under measuring in our strategic framework is monitoring and reporting, which speaks to administration managing the performance measurement program across strategic corporate and program service perspectives. It is through monitoring and reporting that we create feedback loops that inform decisions made, um work undertaken and to drive towards achievement of expected results. So today's presentation will focus on council strategic plan in particular as it relates to monitoring and reporting of key strategic performance measures. So in two thousand and twenty two, council established a strategic plan for twenty two twenty five. The plan serves as the primary resource in development of the corporate business plan, performance measures, and the budget. As per council's strategic plan policy, the plan should contain strategic measures that are focused on priorities and outcomes and be used to inform metrics to monitor the plan's progress in addition to initiatives outlined in the corporate business plans. Council priorities, related strategies, and key performance indicators then cascades through the other plans to ensure alignment and focus on the outcomes that council would like to advance during the your term. The following indicators that you see on the screen were identified to help track the progress over achieving the outcome in council strategic plan that was approved in twenty twenty two, recognizing that more more work was required to uh really uh um clarify and confirm the indicators as well as set targets. During the twenty three strategic planning session, council indicated desire to enhance the indicator section of their plan. So just to talk a little bit about performance measurement practice and may hopefully get the terminology um um consistent. Um. We will provide the high level information on uh uh performance measurement as a practice. So what is performance measurement? So really, you know, performance measurement is defined as a process for assessing progress towards achievement of program goals. So it's the system of key indicators of performance. It's a snapshot of time that integrates important information about performance, uh assisted meaningful a meaningful monitoring and decision making, and it also provides for evidence or database the decision making. So the next logical question becomes what is a performance measure? There are many different terms with the uh within the performance measurement field that are used. You may have heard the term measure, indicator, or metric. Fundamentally, these are all the same thing. One key point, however, is that a performance measure is not just a statistic. It is much more. The physics play a critical role in designing and executing performance measurement, but they are not, but but they are only one piece of the recipe. So really, a performance measure is a qualification that provides objective evidence of the degree to which a performance result is occurring over time. And the other definition that uh you know, we kind of use is the performance measurement results generally describe what is going on, but they don't explain why. So what type of measures? So city of St. Albert is working towards having uh three levels of performance measurement perspectives. One is strategic, and this measures performance over strategic and business planning, um some of our key uh planning directional documents. Corporate measures performance and health of the organization and operational, which measures performance of programs and services. So then the next question, why does all of this matter? Uh so really, performance measurement provides that evidence of change and progress over time. Uh it can show if um initiatives or actions that we're taking are actually making a difference long term. It provides for transparency and accountability towards results and expected outcomes. Um it also gives us information that enables us to learn and adjust or improve if necessary and really foundation for that continuous improvement so that we can see how we deliver services or how uh certain actions or decisions that impact the overall outcome and adjust if necessary and um you know, kind of do it again. So um uh that's the visual that you see on the screen. It really, you know, goes from direction to that execution and then evidence as to how we're making that progress uh to make the impact. Um so the um in addition to um city maturing our performance measurement practice, recently we have also uh um experienced uh increased external pressures to have more mature performance measurement practice in place. And some of these external pressures include EMRB uh and the work that's being done to establish uh performance indicators and targets for the growth plan. Um also provincial accountability framework is expecting municipalities to demonstrate how funding is used to uh um you know, uh make impact to outcomes expected. Um GFOA requirement is also that we show in our budget uh document and reporting documents that uh we have measures that are used to make informed decisions. And also, um a lot of grant applications um uh require municipalities to show again how we're gonna be able to demonstrate that the funding was used to actually make a significant impact. And of course, our own is uh flourish. So there is a um policy that indicates that we need to show uh how where she's making a difference long term. So with that, I will turn over to Nicole, and Nicole will talk about uh cities' approach to performance measurement and path bridge for councils in direction.
Thank you, Daria. Um so over the next couple of slides, I'm gonna give a high level overview of of a little bit more detail. Um so first off, um a foundational piece of the city's performance measurement practice is the focus on outcomes and results. Beginning with the end in mind enables people and organizations to better understand intentions and purpose of work that is undertaken. With respect to performance measures, measuring at the outcome and result extent means that valuable information about the overall effect council is wanting to achieve can be examined and monitored so that course corrections can be made if results are not being achieved. Council's strategic plan is already set up to enable this type of work. This approach complements the current types of reporting council receives on a quarterly basis on the strategic plan already. By adding uh reporting on outcome measures, council can clearly see the progress towards results they are seeking to achieve over their term. Outcome measures also help to validate that the right initiatives are undertaken to achieve council's results. It provides another way of looking at whether the work the city is doing is making the difference we expected. On the following slides, I will provide an overview of how we can build suitable outcome measures with council. So at the city, we follow follow a standardized methodology for performance measurement uh system development. At a high level, it contains five steps. I'll go into a little bit more detail on a few of these steps over the next couple of slides as well. So first off, um results are are articulated. So council has already completed this work as part of your strategic planning sessions to build your strategic plan. Um second, we need to translate those results into um more defined statements so that they can be used as part of measured design. Um this is where we're currently at. Third, um after uh some monitoring and examination of data history, targets can then be set. Um fourth, measures are and targets can then be reported against um online through our our dashboard stat tracker um as well as part of corporate quarterly reporting. Uh lastly, measures can be used to inform decision making for both council and administration. So um first off, I wanted to spend some time to talk about what does translating results mean? Um so this is an important step because it focuses strategic and visionary language that is into tangible and measurable statements. Visionary statements are absolutely necessary for planning because they create momentum and motivation uh for the future. Um but they can often complicate measurements. Um for this reason, translating results can provide a valuable line of sight into what is really being pursued. Uh for illustrative purposes only, um I've taken the economic prosperity priority and drafted some potential result statements um that could help illustrate this. Um. So as you can see, there are four potential results um that come from this one statement. Um and so therefore, I guess this this example really just underlines the importance of of having really distinct and clearly um articulated result statements because um you can take one statement and really interpret it multiple different ways. So once results have been translated, we can begin um to design measures. Designing measures um builds off of those results, first by exploring evidence of that result occurring. From this evidence measure, um evidence can be um used to identify measures and then evaluate um whether they're appropriate or not. Lastly, checking the bigger picture is imperative. Does this measure drive undesirable behavior? Does this measure tell us the full story, or is it is it only part of that story, et cetera? Um this work is typically conducted in small groups of four to six people with a mix of expertise to ensure a well rounded discussion. Um in this case, um we're recommending that each team would focus on one strategic priority. Uh for council, um these teams would include both members of council and members of administration to support those conversations and exercises. Um as well, with any good uh small group work workshop, there would be opportunities for larger group uh report packs as well as opportunity for Q and A. As well with any good small group work workshop, there would be opportunities for larger group report packs as well as opportunity for Q and A. The last step would be setting targets. And so targets are often used to drive progress and motivate achievement. But setting good targets takes time. So having some data history is necessary to set targets because it's important to understand how the data trends and what is expected data behavior. Once this is understood, targets can be fit to the data and reflect the intent of the result it is measuring. Typically, targets are thought of as a single data point, such as a value on a satisfaction survey or a value on an air quality index. However, there's also targets that can be set for maybe less stable data. Such as a band of normal variance, so this would be where the target becomes a range versus a single point. Really, the key message for today, though, on on targets. Is that there are choices in terms of how you want to set your targets and it's important to understand. What your data yields before setting them. So with that said, we've prepared a few options for council's consideration on how you may wish to proceed. So we've identified three options for council's consideration today, ranging from high council involvement to low council involvement. We've built these options with the assumption that all members of council are interested in participating in this process. However, these options can be altered if council wishes to delegate this to a subcommittee. One thing to stress is that across all options, council holds the final approval for all measures. For your strategic plan, regardless of your chosen level of involvement. This is important because these measures need to be meaningful to you as a council in order for them to be effective. So option one contains the highest level of involvement for council. In this option, council will participate in translating results as well as designing measures. Both activities will have support and advice from administration. Advice can include sharing of knowledge about access to different data sources, data quality and ease of data collection. This option is estimated to take about eight hours for council, assuming that we have five measure teams participating. Option two is our recommended option. It includes administration preparing the translation of results and council participating in measure design workshops similar to option one. This result would. Oh, sorry, results would be approved by council prior to any measure design workshop to ensure that they have been correctly translated. And this option, we're estimating at about six hours per council. In both of these options, the largest portion of time dedicated are those measure design workshops. Option three allows for council to delegate the translation of results as well as the design of measures to administration. Draft results would be approved by council prior to measure design taking place. And this option has no additional time requirements for council outside of regular council meeting. So as far as timing is concerned, administration is recommending that measure work be conducted in Q two and Q three of this year. Measures would then be brought forward to council for approval and inclusion. Or prior to inclusion and reporting in Q four of this year. This sets up nicely for a target discussion to take place during council strategic planning retreat in Q one of twenty twenty four. So with that said, that brings us to our recommendation that the Standing Committee of Whole directs the C A O to proceed with a recommended approach. To establish key indicators for the council strategic plan twenty twenty two to twenty five by quarter four of twenty twenty three. Daria and I are pleased to accept any questions or comments that you may have.
You'll accept the questions, but will you answer them?
I'll do my best.
Awesome. Open it up, guys.
Something I asked for.
Pardon?
No, it's just something that is important as part of the whole strategic planning process and the setting measurements. If you have outcomes and you have measurements. How do you, I can see all that is you don't, how do you, how do you know you?
But it's, how did you can't?
What, what gets measured gets done?
Right, yeah, exactly.
So I mean, so along that line, I, absolutely, so. I, I, I'm happy with the recommendation. We, we have, council has to have, these are ours, this is our strategic plan. So we have to be involved in setting the measurements. We need administration's help in and involvement in actually saying, well. How would we measure that? Like, this is what I would like to see measured, but how would, how does that look? What does that look? So.
Counsel Jolly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the fence about the recommendation just because I worry about how productive we can be in six hours. I know we did something very similar when, I think it was with Joyce Tustian. In twenty eighteen, we kind of. Put some indicators together as part of our strat planning process. But. Like, I don't, I don't know if this is a fair question, but do you think that we could get this done in a way that's productive in six hours?
I, I think so. We've used this methodology internally. As part of some of our planning processes at both department and long range strategy level. And have been able to produce. Quality measures in that amount of time. That being said, there's always. You know. Potential that maybe it doesn't go as planned, however. I feel fairly confident that this is a good estimate of how much time we're asking a council to achieve this.
Thank you.
Well, this, just a follow up question, Nicole or Daria, does it have to be one complete day? Could we break down the priorities and do it in two days? Let's do it three, three hours and three hours or whatever.
It's really flexible what works for council and I think Nicole, if you can bring up just the timing. It is breaking down into a couple of sessions that we need to do, so we wouldn't start and finish. Six hours on day one. And yes, we can split up, but we would probably come back to council with. Recommended approach, just to make sure that we can end the session at the good spot before we continue.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
It can be split up whichever.
Yeah, and, and theoretically, although hopefully, but theoretically. It could go longer if we got to a point where we thought. We needed to actually go another hour here, there, or whatever it was, so theoretically. But I mean, I, I think six hours sitting in a room, I think by the end of this fifth hour, we're not really adding any real value. So I mean, I, six hours in one time would be a little challenging, I think. But breaking it up into two separate sessions, I think would. And I'm glad you've thought of that already.
Yes, we did, and we're here to make it as work for council because this is one thing that, yes, we need time with council, it's time consuming. But it's really the best way to actually give you meaningful measures. So we need to invest that time, but we will make it work based on council's availability. And if it's three hours, we will make the process work for those three hours. And even the approach to split into several groups based on council priority is also to help with the extra workload for council. So that we don't necessarily need to have every single council member in every session, so we can then adjust that way.
Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. So, Daria. Or, okay, I'll just, I'll say Daria if I have to share the one which presented. And I don't see all the names on the screen. So how is this differing than before? Because I'm looking at this and so before we would just, we'd give the priorities, the C A O would look at it. And then he would come back and say, here's our indicators, right? So and then this time we're doing like a, like a group session and I'm just wondering. That, and my, first of all, am I interpreting that correctly? Is that before it was like the C A O did it, he come back for council approval. Maybe a council meeting and we would say yes or no and, and generally yes, and then move on. And now we're doing this to like a, a group session. Am I getting this right, Daria?
Uh, yes, council did this before during your strategic planning session and it was brainstorming. So really, it's, it's a start. It's a start of the process. And we never really went back to see if we can actually track that data, if it's. Valid data that we collect and how do we report back and setting targets? So yes, it was done as part of strategic planning session before. To include something in your plan. But even then, we would get comments that some council members didn't really feel that they're meaningful measures or. Enough, that you had enough measures to show progress during your term. Looking at outcome based, often it does take longer to actually see that needle move. But you know, with this approach, we could potentially identify some that are, you know, shorter term as well as longer term. So yes, this is basically taking the time to go through all of the steps in the process properly. So that council feels more comfortable that you can own the measures and that they are meaningful to you. Nicole, do you want to add anything? Good, okay.
Okay, so. Okay, so we're basically, we're doing what we normally do in year one, but we'll be doing it in year three, right?
Year two.
Two.
Well, we're going to the third budget, like this will be done because the strategic measures will be going forward, I would assume. Right, so.
And, and you would be setting the potentially the next council up for success because you would build foundation. Especially for those longer term outcome based indicators that. Future council can build on and continue to monitor.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering if, like, I know counsel said, oh, you're like, I don't know if six hours will cut it. And I'm just wondering if we actually need six hours because what I find when we have these discussions is after administration comes back and says, this is how we're interpreting your priorities. Like, then it's just a discussion based on that, as opposed to saying, do you want to change it all to something completely different? So like, this is being done in Q four and then we're having a strategic plan reviewed again in January or February of the following year. Why aren't we just having that discussion at that time? And then if we wanted to make any changes or clarification, we have everybody in the room at that time and we just. Have that clarity, because I thought that's what we did this year. And I didn't think that system was broken. And it provided, I think, council a lot of clarity as to how this is how we're interpreting it, what we can do and et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just, I'm not sure if the current system's broken, that we actually need to do this or if we're actually going to end up with exactly the same results as what we would have had done had we not done this. And I just don't want to spend six hours just basically agreeing with what's already there. And I really wasn't uncomfortable if it was already there either, Daria, just so you know, so I'm not doing this to want to change it. I'm saying I'm not really sure if anything's broken and I'm not really sure if we need to change the outcome or if it will change, even if we sat in the room for six hours and discussed it. So this is where I'm kind of coming into like, what's the need for it?
Well, I think we've heard that strategic planning at River Creek that there was a desire to do this, so from some. Okay. Does it take six hours and we go home early? Bonus. It's like we schedule council meetings for six, but we sometimes spend two. Uh, Counsel Jolly, is your hand back up with a new question?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll respond to kind of what Counsel Hughes said. I'm, I'm also kind of. I, I wasn't one of the people that, that kind of wanted to revisit these, so. I'm, I'm kind of concerned, not, not necessarily that six hours isn't enough time, but just that. We won't come to kind of a common agreement, so. I, I'm also wondering if it can be just part of the strat planning process in January. I don't know if that's a rhetorical question, but. And also, I, I guess, so if this is approved and we go ahead and have this workshop, is the intent that it would be in camera the same way strat planning was?
That's what we were thinking, just to allow for free.
Free thought?
Thank you, and I think the rest was more thinking out loud, but I appreciate the, the answer voting camera.
You're good? No questions?
Yep, no, I'm.
All right. Wes, no questions? I think it's your turn to get on the board. Wes, do you want to make a motion?
Certainly. Let me just get it here and I'll be happy to do. That the Standing Committee of the Whole directs the Chief Administrative Officer to proceed with a recommended approach to establish key indicators. For the council's strategic plan twenty two to twenty twenty five by a quarter four of twenty twenty three. Did you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Your worship, can we change that where it says the recommended approach to option two? The word in the second sentence, start beginning in second sentence, option two.
So how do you want it to read?
So basically it says proceed with the recommended option two or whatever recommended approach or whatever, or just the option two. Yeah. Just so it just gives us that direction.
And you're good with that, Counsel Broadhead?
Yeah, certainly. Otherwise, it's not specific to option two of the, the recommendation out of three, so that makes sense to me.
Okay. So that's the now the motion. Any opening comments, Counsel Broadhead?
Well, Madam Mayor, I think the comments were made right at the beginning, what, what gets measured gets done and if you don't measure it, you don't, it doesn't get done. So I, I think this is important. Irrespective of sort of the path that we take to arrive at. You know, K P I's that meet all of our needs. I think one of the things that. We all like to say is that we need these and then. Often what we want is able to be provided and, and if it is provided, it's not being able to provide on a regular basis. So that we can update our websites accordingly, so I. At, at the end of this, this is sort of a key metric for me. In, in sort of assessing what, what we come up with as measures is whether or not we can actually produce the measure. And consistently produce the measure and consistently report it not only to us, but to the, to the citizens at large. So that's what I'm looking forward to and more than happy to invest. Six hours in a. Council symposium or workshop, if you will.
I get the right word or David, David will be honest.
Or Committee of the Whole meeting.
Counsel Hughes.
And thanks, I'm not, I'm not going to support this. I, I think that. There's an issue with the timing. We're going to agree to what the measures are and then review the strategic plan a month later. Like, I just think that those should be done together, just like they were done in the first year. And if we want to review the complete strategic plan next year and include the measures at time, that would make more sense. Than doing it and then saying that we're going to have review, we're almost determining the measures a month before they would technically expire. Now, we can renew them, but it makes more sense to do them all at the same time. We already have measures. This is not about having a lack of measures. We have performance measures that are implemented, they are discussed and provided to council. And we provide feedback on them, even in the strat planning this year, we provided feedback about them and I think it provided a lot of clarity. So this isn't about we won't have them if we don't do this at this way. It's just about whether or not we want to sit there and reevaluate them all a month before we do a strategic planning. Like the C A O and admin, they sit in our strategic planning sessions, we all know this, and they do this so that they can interpret what's being said. And then they come back and say, here's our measures that we recommend. And I think they came before council typically when they provide the updated business plan. And we say, okay, go for it. So I'm not, the timing is a concern, we're already doing this and I'm not really sure if we're actually going to end up with any different results. So I, I think that if we're going to do it, we should do it with strategic planning as Counsel Jolly has suggested before, it just that would make the most sense. And, and, and we can just have the honest discussion, otherwise I feel like we're doing a mini strategic plan before we do a strategic plan with the review again. I just, and I, and I'm based on what administration provided to us this year. I don't see a lot of those measures changing. Like, had we had done this two months ago, or a month ago, it would have been really had a very similar, if not the same, results. So even if we sit here and go through every single measure, it doesn't mean that we're actually going to change anything. And so I, I'm not sure if the old system wasn't actually, was, was broken, frankly, I just think that perhaps the strategic planning. Year one, you know, we had some issues and we were doing some corrections in year two, although the plan doesn't still change very much, then let's accept that. Because the interpretation of the plan was such that it made sense now, I can understand and respect what administration was bringing for to try to achieve that. So. I guess what I saw how administration interpreted those results and the strategic plan, I was comfortable with what they were doing. So I guess the issue is, are we uncomfortable with what, how it was interpreted up to this date? And, and right now I'm not, so I'm not really sure, sitting down and discussing it again would actually generate anything differently. And I, and I'm not sure if it needs to either at this point, especially in monkey before you review strategic plan again. That's it, thank you.
Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. I, I'm also going to oppose this today. I think again, I think administration's done a great job of interpreting what, what we're saying. It was great having everyone around the table and strat planning and, and I don't think we're going to come to a different outcome. You know, if we lock, lock each other, lock ourselves in a room together for, for however many hours, so. That's where my vote sits. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think from my perspective, it's, it's our strategic plan. We have to have, I hate to say this, you know, skin in the game. Strategic plan without us being involved in it just sits on the shelf and gathers dust. So investing the time to do a, a review and make sure that we're. on track, obviously with guidance from admin, we've chosen option two or or recommended option two. It allows us to check in not only for our input into the plan, but also for administration to do a check and say what they are doing makes sense to help achieve our plan. So it's as valuable to us and far more valuable, I think, to admin to actually hear and test and and discuss those key measurements to say, these are the things that are going to be done to achieve your plan. And and that gets drilled down multiple lever levels in right throughout everybody's job in the city. So it it really does help, I think, make sure we have that very bottom up granular level of alignment to say at the end of of that six hours, we're all on the same page. And even if we're ninety percent there already, um, then it maybe not six hours, maybe it's two hours. But I think when we see it laid out and brought forward and discussed, then we'll absolutely know. And I'm I'm absolutely thinking that this will be a good investment of six hours. And uh, even if it turns up four, five things that we think we need to put a little bit more focus on, a little bit more depth on, um a little bit more clarity on, I think that's time well spent and uh, look, look forward to voting to support this.
All right.
Well, I was going to say everything that Counsel Kilic just said, so ditto.
Okay. Is it? Oh, go ahead, Joe. Yeah.
Um, I was going to support um, or but with Counsel Jolly, Counsel Hughes, but now Counsel Kilic convinced me. And the reason being is because um our strategic plan was quite grainy for me the last couple of years. And I'm thinking if we can have some sort of pre prep where we go in now stronger direction, it might be helpful. I'm willing to go with the six hours and hope we get a a fresher start in the beginning instead of starting out. I'll support it. Thank you.
Anything to close, Counsel Broadhead?
Well, only to say that we're here as a result of our last strategic plan uh session, and uh we received in this report, uh, I guess on our direction to to deal with the issue of uh performance measurement. So uh anyway, we'll see how the vote goes.
All right, call for the vote. So I've got Counsel Kilic, uh, Mackay, Bermansky, myself in favor. Uh, Counsel Jolly opposed, Counsel Hughes opposed, and I'm assuming Counsel Broadhead's in favor. Okay.
In favor, yes, ma'am.
All right, so that passes by majority. And we are on to the last item of today, which is an in camera of I was gonna say, we need to take a bit of a break while we maybe set up or whatever we have to do, can't remember. But before we take a break, I just want council to be aware that this is the last time Tamara will be with us. She's not leaving quite yet, but she will be in council with us on Monday, the twenty first. So this is her last time hanging out with the committee, I guess. So we wish you all the luck in your next job tomorrow. We'll miss you.
Don't cry. All the best, Tamara, even though I'm not there to say goodbye. All the best.
Brown a little bit. I'm sorry, it's true.
She's close.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we'll take five minute break.
Want to do a going camera first or?
Well, after.
That's the right way to do it.